Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:36. I would like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just give you the glory and the honor. We just thank you for great is your faithfulness, and your mercies are new every morning. We thank you for your protection and your loving kindness. And Father God, we just thank you for how you have kept us even as a city, Father God, and we ask for your protection and your love and that you cover this nation, Father God, with your blood. Father God, we just ask that you would bless us with your wisdom and direction and counsel and peace as we go through this legislation and that we, as we go through the meeting. Father God, bless all those that are affiliated with the city, all our citizens, our elected officials, our families, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillon?
Here.
Councilwoman Hairston?
Councilwoman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here. We have a quorum. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by Councilwoman Fareed, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jones, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Herring?
Yes, ordinance 04-2025, that's on the agenda for tonight. I think that needs to be tabled and relooked at. I reached out to Mr. Kapinski about the legislation because, again, as I stated earlier, we do not have zoning authority in the city of Glen Arden. The law that puts in place what can park in a residential area is created and by the zoning board, zoning and hearing board, and the zoning board requires that, restricts any vehicle up to 8,500 pounds, anything over 8,500 pounds is not allowed in the city of Glen Arden. The legislation has 10,000 pounds on it, which is not, which we cannot do because we have no zoning authority. I actually sent a letter, Mr. Kapinski reviewed it, looked it over, and he agreed. He also sent an email. I just forwarded the email that he sent to me today, saying that it needs to be amended to reflect what the zoning code says. We, as a municipality, cannot supersede what the zoning, what the zoning board does. We cannot supersede county law. We can only make it, we can restrict it, make it less than, or we cannot make it, we cannot go over what they, what they mandate, basically. So if they say 10, if they say 8,500, we can't say 10,000. We can do less than 8,500, but we cannot go over 8,500 pounds when it comes down to commercial vehicles. And this ordinance here violates that, the zoning law. So either table it, or it has to be amended to reflect what the county restricts, what the county code says. The county code mandates that nothing over 8,500 pounds be parked in a residential neighborhood.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, Council President, prepared to outline the amendments to this ordinance to reflect what we learned today about the limit. So wherever the ordinance says 10,000, we would change that to 8,500. And I also added in additional language in the parking regulations where it talks about it must be parked in the owner's driveway and are not permitted to park on city streets or as otherwise limited by Prince George's County restrictions, to add that in should the county make any further modifications.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So, Mr. President, I just want to be clear. So it will be amended?
Correct.
To say 8,500 versus the 10,000?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I just wanted to possibly add at the, maybe add a tail in Black History, Black History Month.
What about? I think you may need to discuss that offline.
Offline? All right, okay, well, I was drawn to that. All right, so, so there aren't any amendments to the agenda, just the amendments to the legislation that's on the agenda? So is that correct?
Yeah, and I've made that amendment so good, Council Clerk, you can make it with that amendment. I'll mark it.
Okay. Thank you.
Hand it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
All right, so are there any objections to adopting the agenda? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted. All right. First up are the minutes from October 2024 through December 2024. We went over those minutes in the work session. It's already been at a public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Ferguson. It was first by Councilwoman Jones. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the minutes from October 2024 through December 2024 is hereby adopted. Moving on to legislation, first is ordinance 0-04-2025, an ordinance to regulate the parking for work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles in residential and public areas to support community business growth while preserving traffic flow and neighborhood quality of life. Council Clerk?
Whereas the city of Glen Arden recognizes and values its evolving demographic, including a growing number of residents who are small business owners, freelancers, and entrepreneurs whose work supports community economics and sustains their families, and whereas the city acknowledges that the presence of vehicles used for business purposes is a sign of Glen Arden's economic vitality, demonstrating a thriving and income-generating community where neighbors can rely on locally available services, and whereas the city further recognizes that many work vehicles are larger than the average private vehicle, and when parked on residential streets, they can obstruct traffic, hinder the enjoyment of neighborhoods, and limit parking accessibility for residents and visitors, and whereas it is the city's, it is in the city's interest to establish guidelines that balance the support of small businesses and community economics with the need for safe, accessible streets. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Section 1, purpose, this ordinance aims to regulate the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles on city streets to support Glen Arden's small business community and economic growth while preserving the quality of life, safety, and accessibility within residential neighborhoods and public spaces. Section 2, definition of commercial vehicle. For the purpose of this ordinance, a commercial vehicle is defined as any vehicle registered in a commercial class under Maryland law, including but not limited to Class E trucks, vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of over 10,000 pounds, Class F tractors, motor vehicles designed and used to pull trailers or semi-trailers, Class G trailer, mobile home, vehicles or trailers exceeding a gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds or a length of 22 feet.
Corrections to the 8,500.
Oh, incorrect, I'm sorry, okay. 8,500 pounds.
But that, that's, that's just a description.
Right.
Right.
Right. So that is right, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. The definition excludes Class M multi-purpose vehicles, Class C passenger cars, Class D motorcycles, and light duty vans and pickup trucks with a GBW under 8,500 pounds, provided they are not outfitted with external equipment or advertising that significantly alters their size and appearance. Section 3, definition of work vehicle. A work vehicle is defined as any light duty vehicle used for business or professional purposes, which is not classified as a commercial vehicle under Maryland law and meets the following criteria. Permissible vehicle classes includes Class M multi-purpose vehicles, Class C passenger cars, Class D motorcycles, and light duty vans and pickups with a gross vehicle weight under 8,500 pounds. Appearance and modifications. The vehicle does not feature external equipment, advertising, or modifications that significantly increase in size, weight, or appearance beyond standard factory specifications. Work vehicles are intended for use in the owner's business or profession, but must be parked according to the regulations set forth in this ordinance to minimize neighborhood disruption and maintain traffic flow. Section 4, parking regulations. A, prohibited parking of commercial vehicles. Commercial vehicles as defined above are prohibited from parking on city streets and residential neighborhoods or in public parking areas unless they are actively engaged in service at the time they are parked. B, regulation of work vehicle parking. All work vehicles, including Class C passenger cars, Class D motorcycles, Class M multi-purpose vehicles, and light duty vans and pickup trucks under 8,500 pounds GBW, must be parked in the owner's driveway and are not permitted to park on city streets as, or as otherwise limited by Prince George's County restrictions. C, driveway requirement for vans and pickup trucks. All vans and pickup trucks, regardless of their use or purpose, including personal use, must be parked in the owner's driveway and are not permitted to park on city streets. D, exceptions. Emergency vehicles actively in service at the time and vehicles owned or leased by the city of Glen Arden are exempt from these restrictions. Section 5, enforcement. A, penalties. Any vehicle found in violation of this ordinance will be subject to a fine of $100 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense, and $500 for subsequent offenses within a calendar year. B, towing and removal. Vehicles in repeated violation of this ordinance may be subject to towing and removal at the owner's expense. Section 6, effective date. This ordinance shall take effect on the 21st, 21st day of January 2025, and the city manager shall take necessary action to ensure public awareness of this ordinance. Section 7, severability. Should any provision of this ordinance be declared invalid, the remainder of, the remainder shall continue in full force and effect. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland sitting in regulated session this 21st day of January 2025, that this ordinance is and shall become effective 20 days following approval by the mayor or passage by the council over the mayor's veto.
Is there a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, let me just, exclamation.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. In accordance to the last, now therefore, there needs to be a line, I think, for the mayor to sign if there is a possibility for veto, particularly with all quarters. Thank you.
Councilwoman Herring?
Yes. I guess my issue, again, is with this ordinance is that it allows commercial vehicles in the city. My current ordinance actually does not allow any commercial vehicles in the city, and I tried to address that by saying vehicles up to 6,000 pounds, anything over 6,000 pounds would not be allowed in the city. Again, I think this comes down to a safety issue in the community. We have residents who cannot get out of their house, cannot get out of their driveways easily, and enter and exit their driveways without maneuvering these streets. The streets are crowded with cars and a lot of marked commercial vehicles. Since this ordinance has been brought up, I can tell you right now, I see commercial vehicle after commercial vehicle, van after van being parked in the city because it now is being made, and now it's known that they're allowed to be in the city of Glen Arden. Again, you have websites out there that allows you to rent your driveway space, I can see that increasing. Again, also, it's been proven throughout this United States in court after court that commercial vehicles bring down the value of these homes. So not only do citizens have a safety issue, they are going to have, they also going to have an issue with the value of their homes being decreased because you have commercial vehicles in the city that's bringing the value down. I'm not sure why it's imperative to have these vehicles in the city. They've never been in the city before, they haven't been allowed before, and I think, I think it's, it's a, really, it's a disservice to the citizens who have worked hard to buy a house and live in the community and peaceful and peace, peace of tranquility, and not have to worry about your biggest asset, your biggest investment being, the value of it being brought down. Because we want to allow commercial vehicles into the city, and I just don't understand, I'm not understanding the reason why. Mayor, mayors after mayors, councils after councils, have had this law in place for years, and it brought the city to the level of, the level that it is now. Aesthetically, it's pleasing, you know, we've had professionals that move to Glen Arden constantly. You know, people constantly want to move here because of the aesthetics. Now we're going to affect the aesthetics by having commercial vehicles parked up and down the street and driveways, which is not a good sight. Again, and it's, it's been brought down, I mean, it's been proven again and again that it brings the value of your neighborhood down, and I'm not understanding why we, as African-American community, who have had to fight for years after years, especially as city of Glen Arden, being an inner Beltway community, we have had, we have had to fight the stereotype that you are in a Beltway community, so you have high crime, you're low-income, blue-collar community, and we fought that stigma over and over again. We've had to fight it ever since we've been in, we've been in, created, because of who we are and where we're located. And that's every black community inside this Beltway, and we're just sitting there giving them, basically, what this piece of legislation is basically saying that, you know, that's basically what you got here, low-income workers, blue-collar workers, so you got to have your vehicle in here, and make, I mean, there's no rationale to allow commercial vehicles in the city of Glen Arden. There's none whatsoever, and even when this, I mentioned demographics, you know, it talks about demographics, or, and I'm just like, you know, there's no numbers to prove the numbers, these demographics. You know, you throwing language out there, a citizen asks, what were their percentages? No one has the percentages. There are no demographics to prove that you have more of one, one type of person than the others, just what you see, or who somebody, or somebody that you know, or somebody that you talk to. Again, I think this, this legislation is a disservice to every citizen in this community who have worked hard to buy a house and maintain some serenity and tranquility in a community and protect their investment. That's exactly what this piece of legislation does, it attacks both of them, and I think that we need to not bring this forth, I think it needs to be even stricter. Again, like I said, the homeowners associations, the five, five homeowners associations in Glen Arden have very strict guidelines on commercial parking in their area, and it's to protect the value of their homes, which I completely agree with. They don't allow any, any in their HOAs. And I think that, as the city of Glen Arden, we should be doing, doing the exact same thing. If you have a business, then you, that's the price of overhead. You find a place to store your vehicle, if you have a business, if you, you know, that's what we've done for years. There's places up and down the highway where you can, where you can park your vehicle, extra space storage, right down on our Martin Luther King Highway, that will allow you to park your vehicles, your trucks, your commercial vehicles, whatever you have, you know, but we should not have to sit here as, especially living in the historical part of Glen Arden, which would be affected completely, except for anything in the HOA. We have to deal with that, and we have to deal with the value of our homes being affected by this, by this ordinance, and I don't think it's fair to the citizens or the previous elected officials who paved the way to make Glen Arden a great city, or the city on the move, that has always been an exceptional city, and it's always had a quality of life that people enjoy living here, and no one wants to walk out their house, even on my block now, I got a van, you know, put it in the driveway, you know, up and down the street. You don't want to walk out and see that all the time, it affects the value. So I just think this is not a good piece of legislation. I said it last time, friend legislation is not a good piece of legislation. Legislation should be based on the 6,000 people in the community, not the two or three people that you know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you do a voice vote, please?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gillon?
Yes.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes. All right. Ordinance 04-2025 passes. Next up is ordinance 05-2025, an ordinance granting a renewal of the cable franchise to Comcast, Maryland, and authorizing the franchise agreement. Madam Clerk?
Whereas pursuant to Section 5-201 et cetera of the Local Government Article Annotated Code of Maryland, the city of Glen Arden, hearing after the city, has the power to pass such ordinances as it deems necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the municipality. Whereas the council has the power under Section 5-204D of the Local Government Article Annotated Code of Maryland to grant non-exclusive cable franchises, and whereas the council has adopted a cable ordinance to govern cable franchises that are located within the city, and whereas the city entered into a cable franchise agreement with Comcast of Maryland LLC, which ended in 2014, but has been extended during the negotiation of the renewal of the franchise agreement, and whereas the council authorized the negotiation of the renewal of the franchise agreement with Comcast of Maryland LLC, and said proposed agreement has been prepared and presented as, presented to the mayor and council, and whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to renew the cable franchise with Comcast of Maryland LLC within the corporate limits of the city on condition that Comcast of Maryland LLC enter into a franchise agreement in substantially the form as attached to this ordinance. Section 1, now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the mayor and the council of the city of Glen Arden, that the renewal of the non-exclusive right to construct and operate a cable television system along with the public rights of way in the city of Glen Arden is hereby granted to Comcast of Maryland LLC, subject to the provisions of Chapter 61 of the city code, and a franchise agreement between the city and Comcast Cable LLC, and a form substantially similar to that attached to this ordinance. The mayor is authorized to endorse the franchise agreement on behalf of the city. Section 2, be it further ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Glen Arden, that this ordinance shall become effective 20 days after adoption. If any section, subsection, provision, sentence, clause, phrase, or word of this ordinance is for any reason held to be illegal or otherwise invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such invalidity shall be severable and shall not affect or impair any remaining section, subsection, provision, sentence, clause, phrase, or word included with this, within this ordinance. It being the intent of the city that the remainder of the ordinance shall be and shall remain in full force and effect, valid and enforceable. Section 3, be it further ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Glen Arden, that this ordinance shall become effective 20 days after the adoption or upon passage by the council over the mayor's veto, whichever is later. If any section, subsection, provision, sentence, clause, phrase, or word of this ordinance is for any reason held to be illegal or otherwise invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such invalidity shall be severable and shall not affect or impair any remaining section, subsection, provision, sentence, clause, phrase, or word included within this ordinance. It being the intent of the city that the remainder of the ordinance shall be and shall remain in full force and effect, valid and enforceable.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, is there a second?
Councilwoman Herring.
Well, y'all both said it at the same time. So Councilman Herring is the second? Yes?
No.
No?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Fareed. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gillon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes. All right. Next is Resolution 27-2025, a resolution to appoint Ava Gay Turner to the Glen Arden Election Board. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Article 7, Section 701 of the Glen Arden Charter specifies, there shall be a board of elections consisting of 10 members who shall be appointed by the council, and whereas the city council appoints as many citizens as required to ensure a complement of 10 members. Number one, Ava Gay Turner, Ward 1, whereas the member of the election board will be required to perform the duties of office and follow the guidelines as outlined under Article 7, Section 703 through 716, and whereas the city council has given confirmation on January 21, 2025, that now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regulated session this 21st day of January, that one, the aforementioned citizen is appointed to the board of elections for a term of four years. Two, this resolution shall take effect immediately following approval by the council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
First by Councilman Herring, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jones, any discussion? Any opposition? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a clarifying question because I know that the council...
You should.
Sorry. I just have a clarifying question. I know the council will step in and appoint people or nominate people to be appointed to the council, I'm sorry, to the election board, when it hasn't been done by the mayor, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So these are being brought forth because that exercise was not done already, right? So the council had to step in, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Correct.
Another question is, since we've made modifications to the charter in terms of the, when the packets are due for people to announce their candidacy, will there be sufficient time for these election board members to properly exercise the duties that they need to fulfill in order to host the election in time, including advertising and collecting and reviewing the packets? Or will there be some sort of expedited process that we'll need to consider to allow them to be able to do their work timely?
I will, I would assume that it'll have to be expedited process, given that we are about to, you know, go into February, and I think the timeline is in March, right?
Hmm.
The timeline for applications?
It's February.
Oh, sorry, February. Yeah, so it will be an expedited process.
Okay. So with that, I just want to thank the council members who brought forth these nominees because we really need to get this process underway, and thanking in advance those people who will be on the election board, who are going to have to take up this heavy work in such a short period of time. So thank you.
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question. That will put us where with the numbers? No, five?
Five.
And we need 10?
Ms. President?
You can...
One second.
Okay.
Finished? Oh, Councilman Herring?
We had this issue before, and you can actually run the election with five, because the election board can actually call in volunteers. So if they need more people, if we don't get the 10, we can, they can actually call in volunteers to assist them. I think it won't be so difficult because everybody's running at large, so there's only one packet going out, it's not a packet for each ward. So I think it may be a little bit, and the packets for at-large are already, they're there, they just got to change the dates and stuff on.
Okay.
So if they get in there and it gets started, you know, after this goes, we need to, they need to be reached out to immediately after we vote on these, so they can get started like immediately. If they get started, I think we'd be able to get it done.
Okay.
Again, thank you to the council members for stepping in and doing this important work.
All right. Any other discussion? Any opposition, opposition, any opposition to Ms. Ava Green Turner?
Can I add something?
Yes. Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I would like to add that majority of...
Yeah, I would like to add that majority of the nominees have been elected, election...
Workers before.
Yeah. And also, actually, Ms. Turner, I met her at the primary, I mean, during the election. She's been working for the county, left the board for several years, so they do have experience.
Okay.
That's an asset for the time that we are dealing with. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Any opposition to R-27-2025? Hear none by unanimous consent, this resolution is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, for the next four, can they just read the title and the person's name and ward and then, because all of them are just the same.
Yeah.
Then we just go move on that way.
All right, so the next four are R... Oops, my... I moved the wrong one.
28, R-20.
R-28, 2025, a resolution to appoint Patricia Dennis. R-29-2025, a resolution to appoint Gail Cooper. And R-30, 2025, a resolution to appoint Susan Rhodes. And is there one more? I'm sorry, and R-31-2025, a resolution to appoint Lolita Green. Madam Clerk, so in this process, you would just cite all of the names and then...
Just the title, then the name, then the...
Title and name. And ward.
And ward.
Yeah.
So a resolution to appoint Patricia Dennis to the Glen Arden Election Board, she is in Ward 1.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Resolution R-28, 2025.
Is there a second? In discussion? Any opposition? Hear none, R-28, 2025 is hereby adopted. Next.
A resolution to appoint Gail Cooper to the Glen Arden Election Board, Gail Cooper is resident of Ward 2.
So...
Mr. President, I move that we accept Resolution R-29, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second by Vice President Ferguson? Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent, R-29-2025 is hereby adopted. Next.
A resolution to appoint Susan Rhodes to the Glen Arden Election Board, Susan Rhodes is a resident of Ward 2.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Resolution R-30, 2025.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jones. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent, R-30-2025 is hereby adopted. Next.
Okay. A resolution to appoint Lolita Green to the Glen Arden Election Board, she is a resident of Ward 1.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Resolution R-31, 2025.
Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Fareed. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none, R-31-2025 is hereby adopted. Next is Resolution R-32-2025, which is a resolution authorizing Gordian to complete the proposed feasibility study for the police building. Madam Clerk.
Whereas the City of Glen Arden recognizes the need for a new police building to better serve the community, and Gordian has proposed a proposal, see Exhibit A, to conduct a feasibility study to determine the optimal location and type of new police building required. And whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to proceed with this feasibility study to ensure the new police building meets the needs of the city. And whereas this work is authorized without a formal bid process pursuant to Section 18C in lieu of the contract bid process required by this section and in place of A21, A, B, and C of the City Charter, whenever a federal, state, county, or local government or any agency thereof whose purchasing policies are comparable to those of the City of Glen Arden has conducted a bid and awarded a contract, the city may purchase by contract the bid item at the bid price from the successful bidder, subject to the approval of the mayor or council. Prior to the city's purchase of an item, service, or material from a successful bidder of another jurisdiction, the city manager shall obtain a copy of the jurisdiction's purchasing policies. And whereas Sourcewell has conducted a competitive bidding process and awarded an indefinite quantities construction contract to Gordian, contractor, Contract DGS-22-300-JOC, to perform construction services as noted in Exhibit A. And whereas Sourcewell's purchasing policies are comparable to those of the city. And whereas the council declares that the provisions of Section 818B of the City Charter have been satisfied so as to justify the waiver of the competitive bidding process required by Section 818A of the City Charter. Now therefore be it resolved, one, Gordian is hereby approved to proceed with the proposed feasibility study for the new police building at a cost of $102,973.27. The feasibility study will be funded from the capital outlay, police facility building This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Thank you. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Jones, is there a second? Excuse me.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Fareed. Any discussion? Councilman Clerk? I meant, sorry. Councilman Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. I guess I have some major concerns with this. After looking through it, well, one, I have a problem is because all throughout this legislation is saying the contracts can be awarded to Gordian, but yet the backup has Nichols. Isn't that who spoke last week? So is it Nichols or is it Gordian that we're contracting with?
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Simpson?
We also have a Gordian representative here to be able to speak on. The work Gordian represents has the actual contract with the DGS. They provide, they're going to work as actually the contractor and Nichols will be...
Is your mic on?
Yes, Nichols will be the subcontractor that will handle it. Gordian is the actual vehicle that provides us the opportunity to not have to go through the RFP process.
Okay. All right. So between last week and this week, it went up, what, $6,000? I mean, $4,000? From 98 to 102?
No, I think it was always 102.
Why did we get something in there? Something, is there addition to it? Oh, okay, okay. I just wondered, okay. So I guess my issue again is $102,000 for a 9,000-square-foot building, a feasibility study for that. And I did some research, and they were saying feasibility studies on some buildings, like a hotel, a 9,000-square-foot hotel, anywhere from 10, depending on how intricate it is, 10 to 15, $10,000 to $50,000. So I'm not understanding why we're spending $100,000 for a feasibility study for a 9,000 square-foot building, which is the maximum that they're looking at from the discussion we had. And don't we have our, and what is CPJ doing, our engineers? I mean, I'm just not understanding. This is a lot of money, and everything I've seen, I haven't seen anything that said it will cost $100,000 for a feasibility study. For you to go out there and do borings, which have already been done, they did borings in this field over here. They did borings on the two other lots, and they said what can and cannot be built there. Again, like I said, this lot over here has no infrastructure in it. There's no sewer, there's no electrical, there's no utilities, nothing. The one where the bank was, there was a bank there, so they had the utilities there. The one on the corner, the corner lot, it has utilities there. So I'm not understanding why we're spending $100,000 on this. I just, I just don't under, I don't, I don't get it. That's a lot of money. And when I'm reading, everything I'm reading is just like, depending on how intricate the building is, and we're just on a police station. I mean, honestly, we're really just on an office building because the police station is going to have things in there for the police department, but we're not going to be having holding cells and all of that other stuff in there. And I just think that $100,000, and I said this last week, is a lot of money. And after doing research and realizing that, you know, feasibility studies are much less for some, even some major buildings, I'm not understanding why we're spending this kind of money. And when I asked what it was going to be done, he gave me some rigmarole, and I just wanted to hear what he was going to say. But I know for a fact that the developers that came and did the feasibility studies on that lot over there and these two lots over here, it wasn't much to do. They did borings in the ground to see what was underneath, see what type of soil it was on. They checked the utilities and see, and I could see, we're going to get into it right now because see, mumbling under your breath is not going to be cute.
Point of order, Mr. Harris, you have the floor.
Okay, so did you point of order her?
No. Well, it wasn't, well, point of...
Well, I heard it. I heard it.
I hear you. You have the floor.
Okay. Because we can, I mean, I can do what I did last week in public if you want to, but, you know, again, $100,000 is a lot of money, and I think we need to look at that, and we need to look at our, and have we, did we even consult with CPJ on this?
No, we have not consulted directly with CPJ.
And their engineering firm, correct?
Yes, sir, they are.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any other discussion? All right. With that, we'll go to a voice vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
No.
Councilwoman Gion?
Stay.
Councilman Harry?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson? Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Well, this legislation fails. I do want to say, though, there has to be some compensation of an alternative. We talk about $100,000 spent, but we spent $100,000 on events in the council's budget. And here we are talking about getting the police station, which they desperately need. They're sharing a closet. And so I get that we may have feasibility studies that were done 20 years ago, but we asked last time, where are they? I mean, anything that can help, like, here we have a contractor that can get things from cradle to grave, everything that we need. But it seems like we just hold ourselves up from progress for things that we need to do. Now, I can't tell you what, you know, I'm not a professional, like, I forgot your name, I'm sorry, in this field, so I couldn't, you know, tell you what a feasibility study costs. I can tell you what was outlined in here, I can tell you what the, you know, maybe based on that and, you know, some other things with a market value, but this, at some point, if we're going to, and this is no point at anyone, if we're going to talk about $100,000, then we got to also look at ourselves, because last time I checked out, our events budget was $100,000.
Council President, may I?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes. I voted no because I feel like this proposal is a bit convoluted, and I would not feel comfortable to articulate what this $100,000 is getting us. I don't know how much of this work is actually conceptual work, so I'm not sure that $100,000 is the price for what needs to be done. I'm not clear on what needs to be done. And I feel that even the conversation that we had last week, it wasn't for a layman's audience. So I feel like I would need to be an engineer to really be able to understand what is being proposed to us, and I don't feel comfortable with spending that. Yes, I know we spend money on other things, but I think in anything that we're spending on, we should be very clear on what it is that we're expecting to receive so that we can even assess whether or not we received what that was. And if what we received is ultimately commensurate with the value of what we paid, and I'm not, I don't feel comfortable in the material that was provided and the conversation that was had last week. I think perhaps we should have a deeper conversation with the, with the contractors really endeavoring to make this clear for council members who are not full-time engineers, who do not make, you know, construct buildings for a living. We really need to understand what we're doing because ultimately, we're accountable to the citizens. I would hate for us to spend this money and then end up in a situation where it's just we don't do anything. So then what do we spend $100,000 on? And that was the other thing. I was expecting to see something like if, you know, we move forward with this feasibility study, then there's some sort of usage of the funds that we've already paid towards what we need to pay for the construction. I'm not seeing any of that, and I don't even know if that's reasonable, but again, that's the reason why I voted no, because I have too many questions, and it's very unclear to me what exactly is being done. And that's not to say that we shouldn't be doing a feasibility study or that we don't need a police department, but I think that we need to be very clear on what we're getting for the money that we're paying before I would feel comfortable to be yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I? Also...
Go ahead.
Yeah. And I just want to say, again, like I said, I'm not against a feasibility study, I'm looking at that amount. Again, and I agree with Councilwoman Fareed. When I asked the question last week, I mean, it was, the answer was like, I really didn't understand what we're getting out of this, you know? When I asked the last developer that came in 2008, they said, we're going to do this, 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 and this for your feasibility study. And again, we have engineers on staff, and I'm not understanding why you, Mr. Simpson, as the city manager, did not ask our engineers to look over this contract to see if it was in line and if it was with what we actually need. Again, if we have engineers on staff, why aren't we utilizing them? They don't cost $100,000, but even if we got their input on this, to let them even look at it and say, hey, is this reasonable? Is this a reasonable cost? Are we getting what we need for this? And what are we getting for this $102,000? And yes, our budget is $100,000, but I can guarantee you, I can go into our events budget and point out everything that we spent our money on and what we got. With this contract, I'm not sure what we're getting. And do we even need it? You know, again, we're not building the Taj Mahal, we're not building a skyscraper, we're building a 9,000-square-foot building, and $100,000, that's a lot of money. We are required by law to be good stewards of our taxpayers' tax dollars, you know? And I don't care whether it's a grant, if it's a grant, it's still tax money, it's the tax money from the state. So I'm just saying, again, I'm not saying we don't need one, I'm just saying, did we look at everything? Did we do our due diligence when it came down to this $100,000 price? Did we reach out to our own engineering firm and ask them, would they, could they even do it? And I'm not understanding why we're not looking at them if we got them on, under contract. So, thank you.
Thanks. So I just want to add. What else do we need to do? I hear that we don't understand, we don't understand, but they have been gracious enough to be here to answer questions. I don't know what more. I mean, they're available for one-on-ones. I mean, they could do personal sessions if you, if you want, they could do... I think that, from my perspective, we've exhausted, you know, every effort to try to explain. And I'm not saying that, you know, we have done it adequately, you know, you say, some people say that they don't fully understand, and that's fine. But they're available to explain. And so the little bit of frustration I have is that, I mean, we often kick the can down the road. I mean, Mr. Simpson, do we have our engineers on retainer or something?
I wasn't aware that they are on retainer, but I know that they are available to us, and I'll certainly...
And so they do the same work? And then conducting the feasibility study?
I believe CPJA can certainly provide an aspect of providing a feasibility study, yes, their engineering firm.
And that avenue was not...
Primarily because after looking at the Gordian and Nichols contracting and looking at some of the other projects that have been done, and considering we've utilized Sourcewell, I thought it was a perfect opportunity for us to be able to provide a vehicle to be able to get this done a little sooner than later, with the hopes of being able to provide all the information for the council to review. I think we can certainly drill that down further and reach out to CPJA to get their opinion.
And after CPJA does the feasibility study, then what's the next step?
At that particular point, it'll be up to the contract, the council, to determine if we're going to go with what they suggest in the feasibility study and hire the contractors, solidify, same as we're presenting for the next resolution for the elevator, to actually go into a contract to proceed.
And the contractor will be who?
Whomever, at that particular point, we determine. My recommendation would be utilizing Gordian as well as Nickel contracting to be able to proceed with the construction. I believe what I've seen so far, certainly, they can actually make that happen. I do agree, we can reference with CPJA, considering our relationship with them, and to drill that down a bit further. But I do feel pretty confident that Nichols contracting, based upon what I've seen and looked at, they're able to handle what we're doing. As it relates to the cost for the feasibility study, I definitely believe that maybe we should drill down further in that particular area if there are questions that we don't have answers for or that we don't clearly understand.
And is, I mean, I guess it's an indirect question. Is Gordian willing to accept an outside feasibility study? If, not saying that we will continue to go with it, but, yeah, that's fine. Maybe just state your name and then you can answer the question. So somebody, they know that somebody else is talking. Just Councilman-
Rob Marata with-
You got to speak louder.
Hello? Hello?
It was on, you got to speak, just raise your voice.
Rob Marata with Gordian.
And would Gordian be able to accept an outside feasibility study if we decided to go with the outside CPJA and then contract with Gordian?
It would depend on the liability for the contractor, if they're willing to accept their drawings, if, you know, is it a, for example, is it a firm that works specifically with police stations, fire stations, things of that sort? So there's a number of questions. So I wouldn't be able to tell you yes or no right now without kind of talking to them, Council President. So I can get that answer and get back to you from our operations team. They're the ones who have the 20, 30, 40 years of construction experience and would be the ones who would consult with them on that call.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
So what does the feasibility study consist of? What is that going to tell us?
So it's, it was at the bottom, I don't know if you guys have it, but it's at the bottom of the proposal.
I'm asking you right now, what would that, once you do that study, what is that going to tell us once you complete it?
So the biggest thing it's supposed to tell us is which location is best of the three, and then if a extension makes more sense, person you build, I believe. Now, as mentioned, I am the business development and contracting person. I am not the person with the construction experience for 20 or 30 years. I'm here to talk to you about how the state of Maryland has issued this contract to Gordian as well as Sourcewell, and we allow you to procure and get this work started and completed in a compliant fashion to Maryland procurement guidelines.
So, so basically, we don't, we can get anybody to tell us that property can be built on. That's a feasibility study we can get through our engineers. I know you're not going to give up a $6 million contract if we decide to build a $6 million building because y'all didn't do a $100,000 feasibility study. I know that for a fact. So all the feasibility study is going to tell us, can it be built on this piece of property? That's basically it. And that's why I'm not understanding why it's costing $100,000. Now, once we do the feasibility study, if CPJA does the feasibility study and they say, these three properties are fine, then we'll pick the property, then we can go to Gordian and say, okay, we're ready to move forward with this building, get us an architect and start doing some architectural designs or whatever we want to do. So that's what I'm saying. And moving forward, I'm asking, Mr. Simpson, if we have something like this where you have an engineer that's going to supply a number like this, and we have engineers on staff, please reach out to them first before we even get this far. That's what's holding up the process, is that I don't want it to go out, because right now it looks like people throw numbers out of Glen Arden and we take whatever comes our way. And so people are going to start saying, okay, we can give it to Glen Arden, they'll approve for us. They haven't done no research on it or anything. And I'm not trying to sit there and have us being taken for broke based on, I'm not saying that's what you're doing, but I'm like, that's what's going to go out there. I guarantee you, find out from CPJA what it will cost and see if they can do it. And that's what we need to do. And you can get that done and then we can move forward. Once they tell us what lots we need, then we can go to Gordian and say, this is where we, this we at, what's the next step? Then they'll kick in the gear with their architects, designers, or whatever the heck we want to do, and we can move forward. It isn't a long process, you know. But this is an expensive process. $100,000 could be another $100,000 you can put inside the building versus, you know, paying somebody to look at the ground. So that's my issue. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I would add, like, now, I can be more specific since we're continuing to talk about this, right? When you look at what the study will inform and yield, it's a lot around the design. And I thought the feasibility study was supposed to be focused on, is this a proper location to house the type of facility that you want? Where something like approaches to promote community engagement through facility design, I would not expect that to be part of the feasibility study. But rather, once we say, okay, this is the spot where we're going to do it, and we begin to work with the designers, we look at those opportunities, not in the feasibility study. And that's what I was alluding to when I was saying, I was expecting to see something like, if you accept this, then we don't have to do that additional step, right? Like, I wouldn't want us to do this and then get into a situation with the designers, and now we're doing this design stuff that we already paid for. So I need to be more clear around the scope of what this is. And I would even like to see a sample deliverable, like, what do people typically get as a feasibility report and how do they then use that? Because again, I don't want to be paying for stuff that's unnecessary for us to assess at this point when we're going to be working with a designer on what should, what the inside of the facility should look like. I, again, would think that the feasibility is focused on, can we build it in this location?
Council President, may I?
Yes.
Two quick pieces. One, I can get some more information, like I said, from the operations team and maybe have them jot down exactly what that would look like and kind of help answer some of these questions that you have today and things that, as Councilwoman Fareed said, are a little bit, you know, if you're not an engineer, it'd make a little bit more sense. Like, I'm not an engineer, right? So I completely understand where you're coming from. So I can do that. That's the first thing. The second piece is, the pricing all comes from a price book that the Maryland Department of General Services has created specifically for Region 3, which is Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Charles County, and St. Mary's County, where they've used national averages from RS means data. It's a price book that updates every year since the 1920s. Gordian owns it. And then we also bring in actual people who couple that data with actual material and labor's costs. And then it's about 240, I think it's 237,000 line items, all kinds of different stuff from materials to, I mean, anything you can think of, this whole room, creating a new building, whatever it is. And so some of those line items were pulled out as it relates to A&E or architecture and engineering. So those costs, although it may seem high, they have been re-reviewed and they are backed by data and they are auditable, if you ever had to stand in front of a board, and they do update every year. So I just wanted to make that clear as it relates to other materials questions that may come down the road with other projects.
Thank you. I remember that, discussing that last week, that it's a regional cost. So you can't charge us more than you charge someone else in the same region, correct?
Exactly. Council President, the cost for you is different than the cost it is for the eastern shores, different than the cost it is for central Maryland. So for example, Baltimore City, Howard County even, is different than the cost it is for Washington County and Garrett County, so on and so forth.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmen, men, and women.
All right. We'll move on to House 32. R dash 33, 2025, resolution accepting Nichols contracting to build elevator. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the city of Glen Arden wants to ensure that all citizens have the ability to participate in their government, and whereas an important component to participating in their government is being able to access their elected officials, appointed department heads and other employees, and whereas all citizens cannot utilize the stairs to gain access to their government, and whereas the city of Glen Arden's municipal building does not have an elevator, and whereas the elevator project has been in progress for over 10 years, and whereas this work is authorized without a formal bid process pursuant to Section 818(c), in lieu of the contract bid process required by this section and in place of Section 821a, b, and c of the city charter, whenever a federal, state, county, or local government, or any agency thereof, whose purchasing policies are comparable to those of the city of Glen Arden, has conducted a bid and awarded a contract, the city may purchase by contract the bid item at the bid price from the successful bidder, subject to approval of the mayor or council. Prior to the city's purchase of an item, service, or material from a successful bidder of another jurisdiction, the city manager shall obtain a copy of the jurisdiction's purchasing policies. And whereas the state of Maryland has conducted a competitive bidding process and awarded an indefinite quantities construction contract to Nichols contracting, contractor, contract, Maryland DGs contract CTR 015457 to perform construction services as noted in Exhibit A, and whereas the state of Maryland's purchasing policies are comparable to those of the city, and whereas the council declares that the provisions of Section 818b of the city charter have been satisfied so as to justify the waiver of the competitive bidding process required by Section 818a of the city charter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this 21st day of January 2025 as follows. Number one, a contract will be requested from Nichols contracting for construction of the elevator. Number two, funding for the project is as follows. A, $996,645 from capital projects. Three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage by the city council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Ferguson. Any discussion?
I have a question, Council President.
Councilwoman Fareed?
So the total project cost is $1.3 million, which is $316,459 more than what we have budgeted for this. So how will we pay for that additional amount, the shortfall? And I see that it's fixed, but it says it's fixed, but then in the detail, it talks about wage rates, and I'm not entirely clear if the fixed price is accounting for that, or will we be charged additional if wage rates go up? I'm sorry, I lost the page. On page two of two of, I don't even know what to call this, the last page, where it says, labor rates and markup to be used for change orders will be provided upon notice of award. So I don't, I don't know if that means, I don't know what that means. Like, I'm, labor costs are so variable, and I don't know how they fit into what they're saying is a fixed cost, if we could potentially end up with even more than the $316,000 just based on that alone. So I guess my first question is, you know, the total project cost is more than the budget that we even have. So how are we addressing that shortfall? So the budget is on the first page after the resolution. It's the total project cost of $1,313,104. But in the resolution, funding for the project is as follows, $996,645 from capital projects. So that leaves a shortfall of $316,459.36. So it's that. And then also, I can't tell if we could potentially have change orders due to labor costs rising, which would be even more money that we're not anticipating. So I don't know this is, I don't know that we can really say this is fixed.
So two-part question, it looks like. So first, the budgetary component, and then I think you can go-
Yes, Council President, we also have Nichols available via Zoom. Dean, I'm going to defer to you relative to the difference in the price. I know we were talking about funding for that additional $300,000 or $400,000.
You see, what we have-
One second. You have to, you have to speak into the mic, please.
Sorry. You see, what we have here is, if I'm following, the, this is for the elevators, right? We have $650,000 in the budget for that. So I'm a little behind. I didn't have this information before. So I'm sorry about that.
Well, that's even worse if we only have $650,000 in the budget for it, because that's half of what we need.
So how do we come up with $196,000 in capital projects?
Unless we were taking it from other areas within the capital budget. But what I see here is 650. We have the budget for elevators.
Yes, can we table this for further discussion relative to-
One second. I have the second part of the question that we need to answer.
Council President, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. So your question about the wage rates, so there's four types of wage rates. There's normal working hours, which is just, you know, if they're working like seven to six. Non-normal, which is, you know, if you had a project that needed to be done overnight on a holiday, you know, something like that. And then there's prevailing wage and non-pervailing wage, which is basically a requirement sometimes by counties and federal, like if you got, like ARPA funds, for example, have to be prevailing wage, you have to follow a certain wage scale. So this proposal is normal working hours, non-pervailing wage. So it follows that scale out of the book and it's locked in. So the cost in the proposal includes labor. So that's locked in. What that line at the end is saying is that if there was a change order, which there typically is not because the pricing is all-inclusive and for the entire project, but let's say they knock down a wall and there's mold and there's something in the scope that wasn't originally in the scope, and they needed a change order, they would have to put a new proposal together and you would have to let us know if it's normal working hours, non-normal working hours, prevailing wage, non-pervailing wage, that's what it's referencing. It's not saying that the scale would change. It's saying that it would be a separate proposal, if that makes sense. And they'd have to either reuse the same scale, or if you want us to do like overnight work or something like that, then it would be different. Does that help answer your question?
It provides more information, but it still doesn't give me a level of satisfaction that there won't be change orders. I haven't, you know, I've bought new construction. I have never heard of there not being change orders, ever. Even in building a deck, you're going to end up with some, some changes. And so what my concern is, is that this fixed price now at, I don't know, January 2025 rates, we have no idea what those rates are going to be, those labor rates, at a later point. And I don't know how we can say that the labor cost is already included. Do we know precisely the number of hours? I would assume that if the labor is already built in to here, that it's, that it's put in here in such a way to protect the contractor against those fluctuations. So I guess that's what my, my concern is, will the workers on, you know, in 2026, when they're doing this, will they accept the fixed wage? Or will they say, we need to be paid more because our union now demands higher rates than what we say is fixed right here, which will lead to even more money for the city to come out of, unless the contractor is absorbing those costs?
Council President, may I?
Yes.
So those are all great questions. The, the contract is set up to protect the state of Maryland Department of General Services. That's who our contract is with. The contractors are in the program. The price book, they bid their labor rates upfront. It's a publicly procured document. I can send it to you. You can look through all their, their wage and labor rates. It's included. The pricing materials, if you have a piece of lumber that they put in as a quantity, that includes them, for example, having to drive down to home- that includes them, for example, having to drive down to Home Depot, put it in their car, take it to the site and install it. So the labor is included and it's locked in. That's actually one of the many reasons why people use job order contracting through either Sourcewell or the Department of General Services through the state of Maryland. Because of the certainty and the ability to create cost estimates. If there is a hurricane that came through and they couldn't work for three days, they would still have to comply to that number on the book. If there was a snowstorm and it took them two days longer to get it done, whatever it is, it's, that, that pricing is, is all-inclusive. The only time they can issue a change order is there has to be something that wasn't initially on the scope. Once that happens, once they've identified something that wasn't initially on the scope, we would follow a five-step process. The first being coming back out on site, including someone from the Gordian team to walk through what that requested change order is, writing up a new detailed scope of work, which you can sign off on. Then they'd have to pull another proposal together using those quantities and those materials that, very similar to the one you see in front of you. And then, I mean, pretty much the council would have to go back through and vote for, vote for it to be done. So we don't even call them change orders. We call them supplementals. You rarely see them because of the nature of the program through the state of Maryland.
Okay. Thank you for the education on that process. And one other concern I have with this and even with the previous contract is that this scope of work is quite extensive. And I'm not certain that we have the requisite skills. And that's not a reflection on anybody in the city, but that we have the requisite skills to project manage this correctly, to ensure that everything that we're supposed to be getting, that we're getting, that if there are any discrepancies, they're able to chase them down. And that's a concern to me. Like I, I feel like these capital projects need a proper project manager who is familiar with this type of work to really make sure that our money is being spent correctly, that we're getting status updates, that we really know what's going on. And I don't know that we have that. And I'm really hesitant, not because I don't think that we need these things, but I'm hesitant to approve them to move forward without that proper oversight on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, may I? Just one, one last thing.
Sure.
The, the wage rates are also locked in and the price book updates every year. So as long as you sign off on something before, I believe it updates every October because that's when the contract was with the state of Maryland. So as long as you sign off prior to October, your, your wage rate or labor rate is locked in for, for that contract cycle.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
This is, this is getting frustrating because again, again, it's a $1.3 million contract. We got throw away $996,000 and then we found we got $600,000. So, I mean, again, we, we can't even vote on this because we don't have the money in the budget. We have to amend the budget to, to, to be able to spend this money, to be able to even vote on it. So we really need to table this, bring back, amend the budget to add additional revenue. And also, weren't we talking to Red Leaf to be the project manager on the elevator?
Yeah, we were certainly speaking, Council President. We were speaking with Red Leaf Architect Group. Unfortunately, they hadn't been as responsive. As well as some of the numbers that we did receive, there were some questions relative to using or utilizing them.
The numbers we received were from a contractor that they recommended. They weren't from them. The numbers were not from them.
That's what Red Leaf provided via the contractor.
Okay, so why are we, we hold Red Leaf accountable for somebody else's work? Because that contract actually was less than this here. That contract was actually $907,000.
Yes, I do believe that there were definitely some variables in that particular contract that were questionable as well. One of the reasons why I had reached back out to Gordian to be able to bring them on to this particular project to help us go through the Sourcewell, utilizing the Sourcewell contract as well to help us determine the best avenues to get this project completed and present this to the council.
Okay, but we went from $900,000 project to a $1.3 million project. And, and see, this is what I'm saying. We looking at, we're just throwing, throwing these numbers out here. We're supposed to just say, okay, we vote on it. Now what is, what changed from that one contractor? And I'm not holding Red Leaf responsible for somebody else's work. Because again, that company actually held these, held these plans longer than they really needed to. They held those plans for almost 10 to 12 years. And they came back and they updated them and updated them and we never moved on it. And we ended up owing them money. So I'm not gonna hold them as long. They did a lot for us that they couldn't, they could have threw them things away a long time ago, but they carried on to them. And they moved forward with permits. But again, the, the vendor that they bought before, again, was $907,000. And so now we're coming here with this vendor at $1.3 million, which is $400,000 more than what we had for the previous contract. And we're not supposed to blink an eye at that? You know, I mean, that's something we need to look at. What is this, what is the additional cost? You know, again, and not only that, we don't even have the money in the budget to cover. We ain't even had the money in the budget to cover the first contract. We definitely have money for this one.
So I want to go back.
Can I, can I take this one? So the information and the discussions that we had prior was stating that, given that we're using funds from the ARPA program to go into salaries and so on, it will free up a lot more funds for us to deal with other, other projects that we wanted to get into. So that's the difference. Now, the budget has not been adjusted based on the changes that we have done with regard to ARPA for the last month. Because in December, we started to do the analysis to ensure that we have obligated funds and spend funds. And we have gotten to that point. So we now can do some amendments and changes to the budget and bring forward to the council for ratification.
Well, I'm, Mr. President, I'm not, I'm not concerned about whether, I know we have the money because the money is sitting there because of ARPA funds. I'm worried, I'm, I'm upset the fact that we did not amend the budget prior to bringing this to the floor so that we can move forward with this. And this is why things are held up. Again, we need to, you know, I, I, you know, I'm a big proponent of elevator. A very big proponent of elevator. And I think that legally, we cannot even vote on this because the money's not even in the budget to pay for it. You know, it's $1.3 million and we can't vote on the resolution appropriating money from a budget line item that does not have the money in it. So I mean, technically, this discussion is, is, we're gonna have to wait for another, next month or in, in that time, we have to amend the budget to put the money into it so that we can move forward with this project, if we're gonna move forward with it at all. You know, I mean, it needs to get done. It's been, it's been years and years and years. And I would like to get this done and up and finished. And this is where, again, administrators have to be aware of what needs to be, the process that needs to take place in order for this to get here. Because again, if you looked at this resolution, should have already checked the budget to see if the money was in there. We could have actually, we could have cleared this up tonight. We could have voted, we could have amended the budget tonight and then voted on the resolution. amended the budget as an emergency ordinance and had appropriated the money into here. So, I mean, we really don't need to go any further with this until we amend the budget to put it in there. Again, like I said, I'm not worried about the money. And, and again, and in the meantime, we need to see what is the difference between the first contract and the second contract that makes a $400,000 difference? You know, so I'll look, I'll look it over myself. I mean, I got, I got both of the contracts.
Okay. And I think Representative wants to answer that question.
Council President, may I?
Yes.
So the other vendor, they are on one of our other contracts. So we, we do know them, but they were not brought to us through Red Leaf. The reason, I believe they have not even looked at the elevators in person. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge. They, they weren't as responsive. And one of the reasons we went this particular route was to try to expedite that, get this in front of the council. Just to add.
So as far as I know, that the, the numbers you initially received were from no one coming out on site or even taking a look at the elevators and coming to. That, I mean, that's a situation where you would probably get change order down the road and it'd come out to the same price. The other side of that is the reason we were thinking Nichols for this project is they started as an elevator company before they were even a general contractor. So they've done the, they just did an elevator project for us. It was a $4 million project in Baltimore Convention Center. They did all the elevators there, brand new elevators. So great work, great recommendations. We figured it makes sense with some of the other projects you have going on. And if you do the elevators and one of the, the nutrition room, you would have a cost savings. So it kind of made sense to have them be on both together. Thank you. Council President, men and women.
Thank you. So am I correct that Councilwoman Fareed has motioned to table this? And I will, the second from Councilman Herring? Any discussion? I would just say that, you know, you guys have some work to do and, you know, figure some things out. And then when this is brought back, we should bring it back with a budget amendment as well. Try to bring it back for February.
Mr. President, so this, I'll have to make some time to redo the budget to ensure that these changes that we went through for ARPA is recognized in the budget. So I think mid-February, because we are really in the middle of audit as well. Talking about two weeks from now.
As long as we have that the next regular meeting in February, which is good.
Ah, that's right.
Because you do an emergency, you do an emergency ordinance and approve it that day. Then they vote on the resolution once the funds are released.
Yeah, it's already been to a work session. So it's really just any amendments we have to go through. So, all right.
Council President?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
So I do want to apologize to the council. I was not aware of the budget amendment prior to the resolution. My thought was, and once we cleared up some of the information relative to the ARPA funds, we knew that the funds were, were available. I thought before contracts were finalized, we had to make sure that was done there. So my apologies for that information. Otherwise, we would have assured that a budget amendment would have been done prior to that.
All right. Any opposition to table in this resolution? Here, non-binary consent, this, what is this? R-33-2025 is tabled until the next regular session in February. Right? And next up is R-34-2025, a resolution to increase retirement benefits to city employees. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the City of Glen Arden, Maryland acts as an employer within Prince George's County in the state of Maryland. And whereas the city code Section 906 Employee Benefit Programs, by ordinance, may provide for or participate in hospitalization or other forms of benefit or welfare programs for its officers and employees and may expend public monies for the city for such programs. And whereas pursuant to amendment to the defined contribution pension program planned for the City of Glen Arden, April 1, 2016, Section 1.3A and 1.3A of the flexible premium annuity flat, where there is a 2.5% contribution to city employees, a proposed amendment to increase the city's contribution from that 2.5% to a 3% with an additional up to 4% matching on the 457B government plan to employees' contribution for a total of up to 7% city retirement contribution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Glen Arden, sitting in regular session this 21st day of January 2025, has determined that one, an increase to the city's contribution to the flat retirement plan to 3%, two, an up to 4% matching contribution to the 457B retirement plan for employees. Three, funding will come from each department's budget line, retirement MOA account, nine item 6230-10, dash X X and Enterprise Gold Room Fund, 6230-55-70-70. And for this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Fareed. Any discussion? Councilmember Herring?
Yes, Mr. President. Okay, I'm looking at the information that I got, Mr. Stewart, from you on the retirement benefit review. And it's saying that we're gonna have to, it's gonna cost us, what, a total of $209,000 per year?
So for the remainder of 2025, it's gonna be an additional, hold on a second. It's gonna be an additional 203,000.
203,000?
Three, 203,000.
203,000.
Yeah. And moving forward, it will be 209,000. And with a 3%, you know, expected COLA increase every year. So we're looking at an additional, every year, 3% addition to the 209. That will be expanded.
Okay, yeah. So basically, trying to be clear what we're doing here. So we're going with the 457. Is that what you're doing?
So it will be, the 457 will have a matching amount up to 4%. But the, and the, the flap which we already have, which we have grandfathered in, which is at 2.5%, we will increase to 3%.
So the City of Glen Arden is gonna give employees under the flat 3%?
3%.
Just for, just being higher?
Yes.
And then we're gonna match.
Microphone, please.
Okay. I'm not going to, I'm not going to. I'm on the phone with you. No, I mean, I got my microphone. Okay. And we're gonna give, then with the 457, we're gonna match up to 4%. So we're putting out 7% for retirement?
Yes.
That's entirely too much money. That's entirely, I see why it's 200, I mean, that's entirely too much. I've never seen organization do that. I've seen them match up to with one retirement vehicle, up to, let's say, 3.5%. I can't see 7% being given in an investment as well as they're gonna put their own into a retirement fund. We can't afford it. We cannot afford no $200,000 per year. And then when I look at page two and they base it on our 2024 unaudited budget, once the ARPA funds are gone, we're not gonna be able to afford this. There's no way in the world we can afford this every year of maintaining a 7% retirement. I'm not the quick income going off of 7%. I mean, you know, I mean, if you're gonna give me a flat 7%, then I can add my own in there too? No, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of money. And I'm not, I'm not ready to sacrifice the citizen's services for a retirement fund that's gonna basically drain the city. $200,000 and we don't even have that money in the, in, in that budget right now, do we? It's not budgeted.
And this is money that we have, I think we had budgeted, budgeted for it last year. And it was, I think we had carried it over. I think it's in the general fund. The general operations.
Know it is.
Yeah. It is in the general operations. But what we're looking at and, and what we should take into consideration is, is a discussion that we had before where we were looking at, and even from what you that we had before, where we were looking at, and even from what you had said, Mr. Herring, that we have employees who have been here for years, and that has left and is leaving with nothing with regard to retirement. We look at two factors. We look at what the rate we are given now, and the actual pay for individuals who are working here. The pay rates are relatively low, and the retirement contribution that the city is applying is also low. And that's one of the reasons why it was kind of justified for you to say that when people do leave after five, six, seven years, they're leaving with nothing much. In the analysis that I have here, I was looking at one person's salary who is earning $55,000, and after six years, they will be holding on to $8,000. This is after six years. When we compare that to the 7%, we're looking at them going on with approximately $16,000 more, which I, I don't know if it's, if that is reasonable, but I think that would be reasonable given someone who has provided services to the, to the city for over six years.
So, looking at what you just said, and what you had, so you saying that if someone comes here, and they work six years, they can walk out the door with almost $25,000?
As retirement.
As retirement? Which, and they're fully vested after the first year?
The vestation, vestation takes place after 36 months.
After how many?
36 months. That's three years.
Okay, two years, or three?
Three years, three years.
So they still can walk out the door with $25,000? And the majority of that, we put into their investment account? That's, that's, that's unreasonable. I mean, the employee need to take a share. I mean, I can see if there's a split. They do 3.5, and we match up to 3.5, and they get a 7% in total, but they had to put their own amount in there, but we're putting a straight 7% into an retirement account, and this is, this is the City of Glen Arden. You know, I'm gonna tell you this honestly, and I'm just, and all employees can hear, I don't care. If you, you do not retire from small municipal governments. It's just that simple. You really do not. Normally, you come to municipal government, you get your experience, and you move on to something, to the county, the state, or the federal. That's normally the way it works. We cannot afford to give retirement, retirement like that. This is gonna definitely break our budget, I'm telling you, because it has to be maintained. $200,000 a year in retirement, go, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot.
So, point of admission, just, I don't mean to interrupt, but just for you to have the full understanding of your argument, the 4%, so it's not that the government, the city just gives a flat 7%. The government, the city will give 3%. And if you are an employee, Mr. Herring, if you say, okay, well, then I'm going to, after I give my 3%, the second one is based on participation. So if you invest 4%, then we'll match up to 4%. If you only put in 2%, then we only put in 2%. That's how it goes. It's not just a straight, we give you 7%. The 3% is a straight 3%. The 4% is an incentive for the employee to invest in their future, and we say that if you invest in your future, we'll invest in your future too, up to 4%.
Okay. But you still got a budget, as though everybody's in it, and everybody's gonna do the math. You have to budget that, no matter what, you have to budget that amount.
Correct.
Again, that's, so that's money that's gonna be sitting there. Again, I still think that, first of all, we shouldn't have the two, the two funds. We need to get rid of one of them. The flap, we need to go ahead and get rid of it. I don't know why we even want to keep that if we're going to the 457. I'm not sure why we, I mean, that was my issue before. Why are we having two accounts? I mean, it's just, you have one, and you get 3%, you get up to 7%. I can see 3.5 and 3.5 match, that give you 7%. That's, that's, you know, we taking, we taking the burden of 50% of it, but we give them 4%, but we're gonna keep on giving them 3% no matter what. And I don't think we should absorb that cost. It's either one, one plan or the other, either the 457 or the flap. And I say get rid of the flap and do the 457, and give a matching up to 3.5% if we're gonna do anything. But this is a budget buster for the City of Glen Arden, and it's gonna affect the citizens, the citizens' services, because again, when the ARPA money's gone, and the housing values fall, that retirement, you're by law required to fund that retirement account. You have to fund that retirement account. And that means something's had to be cut. And I don't, and keep, you're thinking the money gonna flow, and it's not gonna flow. You know, 2008 was a disastrous year for the City of Glen Arden, and every other municipal government. So I just, I'm just not in agreement with this, this plan. I think we need to pick one, 457 or the flap, get rid of the flap, cut out that 3%, and that 3% can go toward the 457, and you get yourself a maximum of, you know, 7% in your investment account and do what you want. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, for clarity, you are in agreement with giving 7%? Am I?
No, I'm not in agreement with the city giving 7%. I'm in agreement with the, the employee putting in 3.5, and the city matching up to 3.5.
Okay, alright.
But right now, the city's giving them 3 points, I mean, giving them 3% flat when they walk in the door, then in the flap account, then you got the other 457 account, where we're gonna give them another 4% or match up to 4%. And no matter whether they get it, whether the employee gets in it or not, you still got a budget for it, because they may get it, and they may take the maximum. So that's my thing. I think the 3% flap should go, and leave the other, the other, and keep the 457. That's, that's my issue before. I don't know why we're dragging out two, two plans. It's complicated, and it's expensive.
Okay. And I, I don't know, you can come up, that's fine. But I will say that without, Karen, with the representative we had here to explain it to us, he explained two plans and said that it wouldn't make sense to cancel one plan. We could if we wanted to, but it's not, it was just administrative paperwork. But there's nothing wrong with having two plans where we have the flap and the 457 plan that you want to elaborate on it.
Okay, no. So, the reason for the keeping the flap is whomever, if we close the flap now to move into the 457, then anyone and all monies that are in the flap now becomes, you know, payable to the employee. And that's one of the reasons why we say, let's keep the flap going as is, so that we don't close that out. But remember, an employee has to vest in order to receive this money. If they, if we should close that now, everyone become vested immediately with whatever funds that are in the flap account.
Go ahead, Councilman.
It's their money already, isn't it? We owe them the money no matter what.
Not if they're not vested.
Not until you're vested.
Well, I mean, if you're not vested, you don't get it. But if you're vested, you get this money.
Yeah.
And they can do what they want. I mean, my thing is, I would close it out. I don't understand why we're dragging that along. I mean, they're gonna be responsible for it. They gotta pay the taxes on it.
So.
You know, and, and, and it's already obligated to them, correct? If you're vested, it's obligated to them.
Until they're vested, it's, it's theirs.
But can you clarify this one point that Councilman Herring said? So, if we cancel the plan now, even if they're not vested, they get the money?
The money belong to them. Even if they have been here for three months, the money belong to them.
Okay. So, the one, just check with Ms. Schultz real quick.
If we close, sorry, if we close flap, we get the vesting period, if I'm here for a month, and you take the money out for a month, we close that account, that money goes back to the employee.
Okay. So, yes, so if you're, if you're not.
Right, exactly. Everybody gets it.
Everybody gets it, no matter if you've been here for.
Everybody gets money back, and then they're starting from scratch with the 457.
So that's what I was saying.
Yeah. And then, that's what you need to do.
But do you understand what they're saying, though?
I understand that, they, they, my thing is, the money's already obligated to them. They're entitled to that money no matter what. No matter what, they're gonna, no matter what, they're gonna get the money. My thing is, once they start working here, bam, they in the flap. We start putting money aside for them in, from payroll deduction, correct?
Correct.
And that's their money. So if they.
No, no.
Well, if they, if they, my thing is, I mean, 3% of what? So that's not their money.
They, they, the flap is not theirs until after three years.
Hmm.
If I were to leave, if I, if I were here for a year and a half, two and a half years, two years and 11 months, if I were to walk out the door, I would not get that flap, because I had not been here for three years for the vesting period.
But if we close the account, and she left, then she would get it.
That portion, so whatever, whatever is, is held now in flap for any employee, if that employee has been here for a year and six months, once we close that account, all of that contribution that the city has already contributed for this employee now becomes their money, if they immediately get it.
And if they had less than a year, what happens?
Same thing.
No, 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 hold on, let me ask you a question. So if they quit before a year?
If they quit, and flap is still open in our retirement, they will not get anything, because they've only been here. We're closing out the retirement system of flap, which is technically not even used anymore by municipal.
If you can't roll that over to the 457.
Cannot roll it over to the 457.
I would still close it. I would care less. I would still close it. I was closing, because you, this is too complicated. This is too complicated for, they have two systems, and we're gonna sit here and fund this to, to the city's demise. That's a lot of money, 7% in two, two investment vehicles, that's a lot of money. You know, that's, that's a lot of money. I just don't think it's fair to our citizens to sit there and put that type of burden on them. You pick one or the other, and we do a maximum of 7% in 457B, close out the flap, but that's a penalty we gotta take. I'd rather take that penalty than be down the road having to fund $209,000 every year. Then, I, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to the citizen, I really don't. And unfortunately, like I say, you work for Glen Arden, my thing is, you're not gonna retire from a, a small municipal government. We're not a bully, we don't have a $12 million budget. We're small, you know? And while I do think we need a better retirement program, I'm not willing to have the city go broke and have the citizens suffer, because that's just, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm citizen first.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilman Fareed? Okay. Alright, I'll just, we're in discussion portion, yeah, we are in discussion portion. So I'll just say that, I mean, I, I think that our employees work extremely hard. They bust their butts during multiple phases of their, their jobs. I do not think that it's fair for us to just write people off if they work for government services, that they should be poor, or they should not earn a living, or that should have any type of meaningful contributions to their retirement. They are great workers, just like any other workers that are in different fields. I do not think 7% is too much to give. I actually think that's probably about the average. And I think that it's not too hard for us to automatically give 3% and invest in our staff future if they invest in their future by saying, hey, an additional 4%, if you invest in your future, I will too. That's how much I value you. I don't care what line of work you do. Every employee should be valued, whether you're a blue collar worker, white collar worker, plumber, trucker, administrative assistant. I think it's a shame if we have the view of, you know, well, you, you know, you knew what you were getting into, so you should not make this amount of money, or you should not have a future. I don't subscribe to that way of thinking. I respect everybody's opinion on this dais. It is of my opinion that for far too long, we have underpaid our employees, and we have been robbing our employees of a, of a secure future by not investing in, in the people who invest in us as a city. Countless numbers of times, we have citizens, we have staff members working Glen Arden Day, they don't have to be here, working all these events that the council put on. They don't have to be here, staying late to conduct these meetings, dealing with, you know, great citizens, we're dealing with some unruly citizens as well. I, I, I mean, if I thought that we could afford it, I would probably allow me to do more, but I think 7% is a reasonable number. Again, fixed at 3%, and the additional 4% is if they invest in their own future, we will also invest. And I think that that is reasonable, and around the, the average of what I've seen in industry, so. Is there any other discussion before we move forward with the vote? And I will also say that I absolutely think that we can afford it, 100%, without a shadow of doubt. So with that being said, if there's no other discussion, I don't see any discussion aligned, then we'll move forward with the vote, voice vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Point of order, Mr. President, before we do make this vote, I do have, is it, is it in the budget?
I will be doing a budget amendment, and it will be in the budget for this year. And moving forward.
So it's not in the budget now?
No. Give me a minute.
And just, just to point it out, we can make this effective in, of when that budget amendment will be made, if it's not in the budget. It was my understanding that it was in the budget, but even if it's not in the budget, we can amend the resolution to be effective for when it is done. So that's not.
Point of order, Mr. President, you cannot expend money that has not been appropriated by ordinance. If it is not in the budget, you cannot vote on it.
We're not appropriating anything.
Yes, you are. You're, you're basically saying that this goes into effect, and once it goes into effect, it's, it's, it's a plan, it's, you're expending money. They're saying it's gonna come out of this, out of this goal room, out of these line items, and these line items don't have the money in them. You're listing line items in this budget, and if you wanna accept the, accept the plans, that's one thing, but to say you're gonna actually do them, and you're gonna take it from these line items, you can't do that, because again, it's not in the budget, it's not been appropriated, and I'm, and you can't, and my thing is this, and it won't be retroed back if you don't, if you, if you do, if you just say it starts on this cer, on a certain day. But again, if we're gonna do it, we need to adhere to the law, and if it's not in the budget, then we shouldn't be voting on this. Again, we're expending money, this is an expense that is not in the budget, and we don't know if it's gonna be in the budget, because we haven't voted on the budget. We don't know what's gonna happen if the budget even passes and, and when it comes out. So technically, you cannot vote on this unless it's in the budget. So is it in the budget?
Currently, it is not in the budget. It was in the budget last year, and it was not used, so it's.
Did you roll it forward?
So it's in reserve.
No, so you did not roll, it's not a line item four in the budget?
No, it's not a line item.
Okay, so it's not in the budget? It's, it went to our fund balance, basically?
It went back to the fund.
Yes. So you need to, so you need to do the same thing with this one that you're gonna do with the elevator, and that's bringing it all, uh, 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 when you amend the budget, amend that budget to include this money in it too. Because again, we cannot vote on something and have it go into effect at all, because you don't know if it's gonna pass if you do a separate plan. This should be, this should be done the same way as the elevator. If you're not, if the money's not there, it needs to be, the budget needs to be amended, and then you can vote on it. And my thing is, what's waiting, if you're gonna put it off, why wait? It doesn't matter if you wait a month, why put it off? I mean, I mean, why, I mean, why not put it off? Because you cannot, I say why not put it off? If, if we're gonna put off the elevator and go to February to amend the budget, so we have the money in there for the elevator to vote on that, we have to do the exact same thing for this piece of legislation.
Let me just have one question. I'm not disagreeing with you. I was told that it wasn't a budget, but if it's not in the budget, what, what line item does it come out of? Does it come out of the same thing as salaries?
Yes. It is in the same section as salaries.
Same section, same line item. Now, the reason why I ask is because the council made a decision that our salaries will be paid from ARPA, which frees up a lot of money in that line item, which will mean that money is in the budget for that. in that line item, which will mean that money is in the budget for that line item.
Exactly.
If, if I am correct. I could be wrong. So I don't want you to say that I'm correct if I'm wrong. I am just laying out that if, we started out saying that we have this amount of money in salaries, uh, and fringe benefits for, uh, a fiscal year 2020, is it 2025?
Five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
And the council has already made a decision that most of that line item has already transitioned to ARPA. So there's a surplus in 2025, a huge surplus in 2025 because of ARPA that is in that line item. If that is the case, then the money is there right now.
Yes, it is. Given how you explain, yes, because I've taken money from those areas to put into.
Now, I, I also want you to be sure.
Now, so.
So, so look, I, I.
It would be best to table it until.
Yeah, I was just saying, in a budget precaution, I don't want you to, I, I, I agree that it's there. I just want you to double check that it's there. I don't think that waiting to February, it will harm us at all.
Yes.
But I just wanted to point out that that money is there.
Let me say this, because y'all playing shell games now. You got to go what's on the paper. What's on that paper is what we have in the budget. That's what's been approved. So if the money is there, then do what you're supposed to do legally and amend the budget, show where you're taking it from, and put it in the budget. Playing these little shell games is not fair to the citizens to sit there and make them think something is there when we don't know if it's there or not. We still, y'all, y'all talking about building this, $1.3 million in this room, $1.3 million for the elevator, the, the, uh, what's called it? You don't know how much money we have once we build out everything. It might not be, that ARPA money could be gone by that time. By the time you spend, spend, been building out all of these elaborate projects, and you factor in the goal room, you might go ahead and say you ain't going to have no money. So again, let's do it the way it's supposed to be done. Let's not sit here and mislead the citizens. Right now, the budget says it's not in the budget, because it's not in the budget. Because when you look at it, you're not going to see it, a line that says retirement with an increase of $209,000 or $203,000 in it. So let's just stop playing these little shell games and, and trying to make people think that something's there when we don't know if it's there and when it's not, maybe they should be able to see that it's there. See, I don't like that, I don't like that, because again, we're doing the citizens a disservice when we do stuff like this. We are supposed to be transparent. People sit up here and talk about transparency, 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 and then we're talking the shell game about, it is in the budget, but only two people know it's in the budget. Because I don't know what's in the budget, so it isn't in the budget. If two people know it's in the budget, then I think that's not, everybody knowing what's in the budget. And if it is in the budget, then that should have been shared with us. With this piece of paper, there should have been something with that saying, this is in the budget, and this is how it is, and explaining it out. So, um, yeah, I don't like things like that. I don't, I think it's misleading to the citizens when you're putting stuff out like that. Do it the right way, amend the budget, put it in there, and let the citizens see that you're basically putting two, you're live, you're putting a liability on them of $203,000 a year for the rest of Glen Arden's existence. So.
Okay. Vice President Ferguson?
I just had a question for clarity. Um, um, the line item numbers, are there two separate line item numbers, one for salaries and one for retirement?
There's one for salary, one for, um, for benefits.
Okay.
But at the end, salaries and benefit is a sub-line for expenses, for personnel.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Yes.
As far as the line item, if there's not, uh, that, those monies are not, or funds are not in that line item that is for benefits, then, I mean, that's, that's what, um, I mean, I agree that that should be there too. So if it's not there, um, I agree with Councilman Herring.
Yeah. I would, I would recommend that we table it to get, um.
That, that is what we are doing.
So that we could move forward. Yes.
That's what we're doing. We're tabling it. Our motion that we table it. Goodness gracious. All right. Any discussion on tabling? Any opposition to tabling it? Until February regular session, where Mr. Stewart will come back to ensure members of this council, uh, members of the public, that the money is there, which is completely fine.
Yes.
All right. Hearing no objections. We will table this into February's regular session. All right? All right, I think the last one is, yes, it is the last one, R35, that's 2025 Resolution Draft and Award, and Award, a contract to Thomas Michael for the American Rescue Plan Project Management Services. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the City of Glen Arden's administration recognizes the need for a professional project manager to manage the existing, existing American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, as well as the programs, initiatives, and plans specified by the mayor or city council that use the aforementioned, aforementioned funds, whereas the city desires to extend the term of the agreement through June 30th, 2025, per Article Two of the agreement, upon the same terms and conditions. Whereas the parties also desire to amend the total contract value under Article Three B of the agreement, upon mutual agreement by the parties, and now therefore, in consideration of the mutual covenants and obligations, uh, contained herein, and other good and valuable consideration, the receipt insufficiency of which is hereby acknowledged, the parties agree as follows. Article Two, period of performance, the term of the amended agreement is hereby extended through June 30th, 2025, subject to the availability of city funding. The term may be further extended by written, written agreement of both parties. Article Three, fee for services. B, the amount of compensation for the extension shall not exceed $19,800 due to the consultant under this agreement. If the agreement is extended per Article Two above, the total contract value shall be adjusted upon the mutual agreement by the parties. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this 21st day of January 2025 as follows. One, that the consultant proposal be drafted substantially the form as attached as Exhibit A, B, and is hereby approved. Two, that the city manager be, and is authorized to sign the consultant agreement. Three, payment for services shall be taken from the American Rescue Plan line item 10 dot seven five dot 10 dot seventy-one dot three zero. For this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you. Is there most to bring this to the floor for a vote? So moved by Councilwoman Jones, is there second? Second by Councilwoman Fareed, any discussion?
Yes, Ms. President. Can we head a line under the, after the noun therefore, even though I know it's in the body of it, that, uh, this extension shall not exceed $19,800? Like a, a, item number, um, make number four says, say, uh, um, the extension shall not exceed nineteen hundred, nine, nine, $19,800, and then, uh, four becomes five, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have issue with, with this resolution and just the, the overall, um, services received from this company. Um, in the entire time that we've had the ARPA funds, I don't believe I've seen ever even a dashboard that shows us what our status is, showing us, you know, where we are in terms of our spend, what our, our projects have been. We had an exercise over the summer where a number of council members came together just trying to figure that out. And this is basic project management, right? Just if you have a PMP, this is, these are things that you would be doing. And we, I've not seen that. And I'm still unclear today what we've spent ARPA funds are, how much ARPA money was remaining. I know we put it all towards salaries, but I disagree with that fundamentally for some of the reasons that were articulated previously around, like, um, the retirement, et cetera. When you do that, you kind of are disguising what the true costs are and not really, um, it's not really clear what, where ARPA funds were specifically allocated to. Um, I am also concerned, the number of ARPA projects that I've been involved in haven't received any project management. I could, the ones that I can think of are, um, the, the elevator, right? We're, we're talking about that, we're spending funds on that and talking about who's going to project manage that. The council chambers, nutrition center, the tutoring program, that was all done by, um, the city manager and the administration in terms of setting that up and facilitating that, that program, the uniform program, the Seventh Street Park. So I'm unsure what we've even spent money on related to ARPA project management from this particular, um, company. So I'm not even sure why we're spending more money. I would want an audit of what we have spent, because I haven't seen anything. So I'm not comfortable with this engagement, let alone extending it. And I think this is, you know, becoming a theme where we're, and I'm glad that we were pushing back on some of these contracts, not to say that they're not needed, but we don't even know what we're getting. We're not, um, we're not holding the contractors that we're engaging with accountable for the actual deliverables. I don't even know that we have, um, a scope of work that says what we should get, but at a minimum, we should be seeing some sort of regular reporting on the status of ARPA. And it's been nearly four years, and I've never seen that. So it's really concerning to me that we've spent as much money as we have spent already, and that we're looking to spend additional money. So for me, it's, it's a no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, just, just one more, one thing. Can you just, again, give me what, what are we getting with this again? This is to tie out the funds that we have remaining? Is that what this is supposed to be doing?
No. Um, Mr. President, very me.
Yes, Mr. Stewart.
This was a request actually done by you, Mr. Herring, that you wanted Mr., um, Tom Himmler to work with me in closing out the ARPA fund. This was, this, this was a request that you had made.
That I made?
Yeah.
I don't remember that one.
That you would want Mr. Himmler to assist with closing out the ARPA funds.
I don't remember that. You got to pull that, pull, pull the video.
But we'll, we'll.
Pull that video, because I don't remember that. I know, I don't, I don't remember. Because if he was going to do it, he's going to do it in the time period that he had, extend it into, into the following year. I don't remember that.
Yes.
Well, you got to, you got to pull that video for me, because I don't remember, I don't remember this, because I, I mean, I know it needs to be wrapped up, but I didn't know, I mean. Yeah, you got to show me that one, because I, I ain't going to sit there and put me on Front Street. I know, I know I'm crazy, but I ain't that crazy.
All right. Any other discussion?
Well, I, I have a question about the closeout, Council President.
Yeah.
What, what, what's to be, what's, what's to come of the closeout? Will there be a report of what our spend to date has been and what our commitment is? What will we, what will we get?
Yes.
Because I just feel like that is such a simple question, and we're never able to answer it. How much of the ARPA funds have we already spent or committed, and what's left?
Yes. So in, in next month's report, you will get, um, the breakdown as to what has been spent and any obligations that are remaining.
Okay. And that's, so we got to pay the $19,800 in order to get there?
No, no, no.
So is that something that we were supposed to be getting all along?
The ARPA, um, project needed to be obligated and spent, well, obligated through December twenty, 31st, 2025. Now, I have already completed a lot of the allocations and have prepared a schedule for what has been spent already, have the backup, everything to support it, and what is remaining. And, um, that is the report that I'll be giving, um, in the next couple of weeks to the council.
That's great that we're getting that from you, but I would expect to be getting that from the project manager. So I, I feel like we're, a, a service that we're paying for is actually not being provided by that service provider, but rather by our treasurer. And I'm not saying that you are not capable of doing that, but then why do we need, like, I'm, I'm unclear of what Mr. Himmler has done that has warranted what we've paid thus far, and then this additional, I know that, and I know this is a small amount, $19,800, but it's just triggering for me because I have not been satisfied at all with, um, the services that we receive. So to ask for additional money, I'm just wondering for what?
So what, if you don't mind, what, what I could clarify for you is, um, Mr. Himmler, um, has been given some of the projects that are in ARPA. Uh, we're talking about intergenerational poverty, those plans. Um, when it comes to assets, you know, capital items, we manage those. Um, when it comes to the program that you have, the education and tutoring and uniform, that was being done in-house as well, right? But not by him.
Why? He was hired to be the ARPA Fund Project Manager, right? It says, to manage the existing American Rescue Plan Act funds, as well as the programs, initiatives, and plans specified by the mayor or city council that use the aforementioned funds. Therefore, any resolution that has been passed that states that we're using ARPA funds, I would have expected Mr. Himmler to be managing those. But I just rattled off a number of programs, and I don't know how much those amount to, but I would say that's at least half of the money that has been spent for ARPA.
Yes. Um, and, and I have been also managing the projects with him, so.
That's insane. So I'm sorry, not to cut you off, because I don't want to belabor the point, because clearly my vote is going to be no.
I'm sorry. Uh, were all the reports done to classify the remaining ARPA funds as salary?
Yes, I've completed that schedule already.
And that went where? Did you report that to, to?
No, we are reporting, are in April. April is when we are reporting, um, to the American Rescue Plan with regard to.
But I thought we had to make a designation by December.
You mean, report to them?
No, 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 I'm not, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry about this, sorry about.
It had to be used or designated, allocated by December 31st.
Yes, and we have done that.
Okay. I'm saying, how? I mean, did we, who did we reach out to? Who did we, who did we designate it with? Does that make sense? Am I not making sense?
No, because, um, okay, so the Department of Treasury.
Who did you tell?
The Department, right, so the Department of Treasury is asking that. We report in April, as we did last year, about how our spending and, um, obligations, and what then is when we are going to be sending that report in to them.
So we did not have to make that designation by 31st? We had to make it by April?
We have to make it by April, but it must be spent and obligated by December 31st, 2024.
Yes, 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 okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is that it? Councilman Herring, let me see your green light.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. All right. Well, if that's, if that ends our discussion, we'll move forward with the voice vote. Madam Clerk? I'm, I'm, well, I'm sorry. Vice President Ferguson?
I mean, I guess I'm confused. So this, um, resolution came out as a result of request for extended work?
Yes, request for extended work to ensure that the, um, the closeout was done by Mr. Himmler.
And this is for how many months? I'm sorry. I'm not looking at it right now.
We're, we're looking through to June, but for me, I, I would say through to April. Given that, then is when we have to send in those reports by April 30th.
And this is a fixed amount, so he's not necessarily doing anything right now?
No, no.
But we'll be paying him a fixed amount every month?
I think it's based on input. I think it's based on.
So this is it? So we don't cut a check every month?
No. No.
This is just making funds available for if he does work?
For if he does work, yes.
Okay. Ah, okay. I was under another impression.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, one more question. And what, what proof do we have that he worked?
Okay, so on a monthly basis, he would send his invoices, which explain to us whatever he has done on a, on each project on a daily basis. So his invoices do give us a proper breakdown of his activities for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Are we certain?
Yes. Um, I could pass those to you. He does give, which I really asked for, a breakdown of all the activities that he has done, um, for the month.
Because I'm, I'm saying that because I recall that I, I'm not signing checks and it's the same amount every month. So it's not, so it's.
So, so there's, there are two different contracts you're talking about. So there's one for John, which is the grants manager, and I have actually spoken to him to say, you need to give me detail as to what you have done. Not Mr. Himmler. This is the grants manager, the grant writer.
Okay, I'm talking about the grants manager. Mr. Himmler.
Mr. Himmler, his invoices are detailed.
I didn't ask if they were detailed. I, I recall they're being fixed, so that number doesn't change.
No, it, it changes based on what he does.
Okay, all right. I could be wrong, that's fine.
Yes, yes.
All right, let's go ahead to the vote. I don't wanna.
Councilman Fareed?
No.
Councilwoman McGeeon?
Ed.
Councilman Herring?
Epstein.
Councilwoman Jones?
Epstein.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Epstein.
Council President Curtis?
Uh, no.
Okay. And Councilwoman McGeeon?
Uh, so my answer is no. I'll leave it at that.
I'm sorry, we can't, okay.
I said, in the interest of time, I'll just say my answer is no.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Mr. President?
Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, can I ask that, if this comes back, can we get some information on what has been done? Because we had a report, remember, we sat online with him, they had a spreadsheet and everything else. Technically, we should have had that report by December 31st, I think, showing what was spent, what was obligated, what wasn't obligated, everything that you used to justify putting that money into payroll. We should have a report on that so we can see what exactly was moved and was, because I, I can tell you how much was moved to payroll or what was moved to payroll. And I agree with Councilman Fareed, again, is a lot of, I mean, you, you wanna spend more money, but we're looking at what, what are we getting for this? You know, again, you know, I know you may need help to close out, and I know you're gonna need help, and I know I didn't say it, but, um, but, um, again, we do need some type of reporting to come out from, and he should be able to give us one. I mean, you're doing it too, but something, we should get something for the next time.
So can I go ahead, Mr. President? I, I will have a report by, if not the end of the week, by next week, Tuesday, which I will send to all of you. All right? Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sure. Councilman Fareed?
So I'm just gonna make this general comment to the rest of this term and for whomever is gonna be on the council next year. I think we really need to take a strong look at these contracting agreements. We have a staff that is doing work. As we've just heard, um, our treasurer is supplementing a lot of what we expect the contractors to do. This is, you know, the, the contractors are coming in easy, 100, $200,000, easy, and we're just paying them without any real verification of the services, um, any real scrutiny to make sure that we're getting the level of quality that we should be getting. And our employees are stepping in to fill in some of those gaps or to help be that interpreter, but then we can't afford to pay them what they should be paid. We can't afford to provide for them for their retirement, but it's almost carte blanche. We're writing these checks to these contractors. And I, I just think we need to be, um, a little bit more judicious with how we're spending our funds and keep our proverbial feet on their necks to make sure that we're getting every penny that we put out, that we're getting something for that. No one should be, to the point that Councilman Herring was making earlier, no one should be looking at the City of Glen Arden as, and as a, as a bag, right? They shouldn't be looking at us as a way to kind of, um, just piggyback off of what they've said they've done for other municipalities and we're just going along with that and paying them and still being in the situation where things are not really getting done to the level that we expect them to be, to be done. And I just wanna thank also the employees who are always stepping up and stepping in and making sure that things are done in this city.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, sorry, I think I lost contact. All right, moving on. Uh, Minister of Reports, are there any questions for, uh, the mayor report? I'm sorry, who's that? Well, I don't know who that is. Um, all right, well, we'll move on. City Manager Simpson?
Yes. Um, I'd just like to definitely open things up for questions and touch on a couple of highlights for that time period that we're reporting. Currently, I actually am going under, conducting interviews tomorrow for the Director.
Please, me, Council President?
Yes.
Um, we can't hear, I'm not sure if the mic is on or not.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Um, I'll definitely open things up with any questions that anyone we have and just highlight a couple of points here for the time period of this particular report. The Director of Public Works position, actually, interviews are being conducted on tomorrow. We're hopeful with the candidates we have that will possibly have a candidate that we're able to present. If not, we will open that back up. The Assistant, open that particular position up, um, for more applicants. The Assistant City Manager position description is being reviewed and should also be provided to council before the end of the month for your approval to also consider that particular From that November, December time period, uh, those are the key areas that I'd like to highlight, and I'm open for any particular questions that you may have.
Counsel, are there any questions for City Manager Simpson?
Yep.
Mr., I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Herring?
Here, so, um, question, um, so where are we with Hay, Hay Street is getting worse and worse?
Yes, so, um, that particular contract, of course, is the weather with NZI. Hay Street, we, the two particular large potholes that you're mentioning, um, there will be full deaf patches done with that, with NZI, along with the rest of the construction, sidewalk work, Church Street, all those other areas, um, as well. So my hope is that as soon as the weather breaks and we have some consistent weather, we will do full deaf patches for those. I, I would think if we attempt to do some temporary patches, they're gonna come right back, especially considering this particular weather.
Okay. Um, yeah, because I had the same issue with Church Street, because again, I, it would have been done by now. Um, you know, we, we walked those streets, I know it was warmer when we walked them. And now, you know, here we are in the wintertime and nothing's done. The dollar bus, what are the hours for the dollar bus?
Um, right now, it's been eight to two. We're looking at some changes to be able to have the bus available during normal business hours, 8:30 to 5:00. I'm hoping to have something to be presented, definitely within the work session, in February's work session relative to that, and some of the changes that are being suggested for councils approval.
Okay, because again, like I said, the hours need to be extended, because I know people can't even go to a doctor's appointment if it ends at one or two o'clock. Most people get to their doctor's appointment about 10 or 11. You know, and usually takes about two hours, and by the time they get out of there, you know, the bus probably has stopped running. Um, and I know last time I saw the bus, it didn't have the coin thing on it, does it?
Uh, no, no. To actually have a bus with a fare box, um, you have to go through an extensive, a Department of Transportation process. We can certainly consider that, but there's a, quite a bit of inspections and requirements to be able to install a particular fare box. Again, we're looking at extending those hours and looking at other options as it relates to fares, particularly taking into consideration seniors and trying to make it easier for them as well.
What kind of requirements you had to go through to put a fare box in the bus? It was one in, it was one in the other bus, so.
Yeah, it was. I don't know exactly why we actually had it in there, but I can, I'll provide that additional information as it relates to why we aren't able to actually install a fare box.
Yeah, you gotta show me that one, because again, well, I think that should have been brought to us before now, because again, we collected money for that. And that was just, I mean, it wasn't much, but it was something, it was something, you know? And anytime, again, we set a rate or something to be purchased or a price for something, it needs to be, it need to be collected. You can't arbitrarily say we're not doing fares anymore. That's not, that's not your say, because one, that money is actually included in our budget.
Well, let me say, fares have been collected. I just didn't, uh, through the driver, he does provide that, uh, money to finance, I believe, to Ms. Phillips, uh, as he, as it is collected.
He collected and do what? Put it in his pocket?
No, in the envelope, and, and brings, brings it up for accounting and accounts for it on a daily, I think daily or weekly basis.
Okay, this, this sounds all kind of crazy. All right.
One other thing I'd like to add to, as you're talking about the buses, the GPSs, I forgot to mention that, have been, are being installed. We've started with the police department, um, and every vehicle should have the GPSs installed on them, hopefully within the next week. There are a few more that need to be ordered, and we're going to install, or we would like to install, um, a dash cam in the fare bus as well, just to be able to, along with the GPS, just to be able to understand where we're going, what we're doing, how the fares are picking up.
And the dash cam on the bus, you said?
Yes, sir.
Is that in the budget?
Yes, sir. It, it would be covered under that resolution, because it's, it's part of the GPS as well. It's just a camera that's being added to it.
Camera wasn't in that legislation?
I would say for that particular, um, GPS device will also have a camera.
So it's a GPS camera?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, that's it for me for the time being.
Okay. Any other questions for City Manager Stuart?
Oh.
I'm in, um, Simpson?
I do.
Yes, Councilman Herring?
Where are we at on a RFP for trash?
Uh, it will definitely be presented no later than March. We can get it in February, we will. I know that that's something that was made clear, that we want to do an RFP this year, and definitely before, uh, this particular council's terms up, we'll have that RFP.
And isn't this the last year for the snowplow too?
Yes, sir.
So is that RFP going out also?
Yes, sir.
Same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Next stop, uh, oh. Mr. Simpson, anything from Public Works? Are you, you filed with Public Works?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I just wanted to combine the two there. Some of the Public Works information is also provided on that particular.
Okay. All right. Next up is code enforcement.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
You are going to have to use your outside voice.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I think everyone has had an opportunity to review code enforcement's report, and so I would like to, um, mention two things and then open the floor up for any questions anyone may have. We are still waiting to have follow-up for the property at the 8700 block of Glen Arden Parkway. Kopinski's office should be getting back with me soon as it relates to where we stand with the next court date. Also, I would like to bring to the council's attention that code enforcement is starting to, um, see a lot of vehicles that have covers over top of them. We do understand that, uh, many citizens have car covers to protect their investments and to protect their vehicles, but we're also noticing a lot of citizens that are using them to, um, to hide vehicles that are inoperable, um, vehicles that have expired and no tags. Um, any questions?
Questions?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Herring?
Um, what's it gonna, oh, I'm noticing now throughout the city, slightly over in Wall One, people putting cones down in the street to block off their parking section, which is against the law. They cannot reserve a space on a public street. It seems to be a major issue on, um, Hay Street and Fisk. Um, and I think they were doing it on Grant also, but I think I need to look at that. You know, unfortunately, you know, I know they may want to park in front of their house, but again, it's a public street and we don't have the parking permit program in place yet, so that's, that's gonna be an issue. Um, so if y'all can look at that. Also, I mean, like you, I'm, I only, I'm noticing a lot of car covers, but I'm noticing a lot of cars in the backyards. And I think y'all need to look at that. When I ride through, I'm seeing a lot more cars in the backyard with car covers on, and that's a straight violation because they parked on the grass, they're not even on the driveway. So I think y'all may wanna, um, you know, be a little bit more vigilant when it comes to that. Um, unfortunately, like we discussed, you can't do nothing about boats. State of Maryland is a boating, boating state, so, you know, people got boats in the driveway, ain't nothing you can do about that. That's, that's in front of park violations. So, yeah, um, those, those, y'all just keep an eye on those things.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council McGeeon?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask a quick question about where were we with the 88, I believe it's 8807 Glen Arden Parkway construction? Like, did, did we ever respond? I just want official clarification as to, is the builder slash owner still waiting on something from us or not?
Thank you for the question. No, at this point, the, um, the builder has contacted his attorney and, um, will be taking the case to court to try to get permission to overturn decision to not provide permits for a curb cut.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said you, trying to, because it cut out a little bit. You said, you were, you said attorney, um, to overturn the decision? I didn't hear the after that.
Yes, the decision by the city council not to provide, the builder would a permit to do a curb cut. So if he wants to appeal the city council's decision, he has to file a complaint within the circuit court, and he has started that process, and Kopinski's office is leading, um, the case for the city council.
Okay, I just, thank you. I just wanted to raise something else, that in regards to this, the county said, well, gave this owner authorization, right? And he was coming to us for permit purposes, like for us to check our box? Is that what it was or not? I'm trying to see where the standstill is.
Yeah, so before he actually invested in county permits, he wanted to come to the city council to see if the city council would allow him to get a curb, a curb cut permit before he actually invested in permits from D-PAC.
Okay. And, and the reason, so the, the only reason why I'm asking, obviously, is because I know this has been something that's been going.
curb cut permit before he actually invested in permits from, uh, DPAC.
Okay. And, and the reason, so the, the only reason why I'm asking obviously is because I know this has been something that's been going on for a minute, but also knowing that one minute I hear, and I don't know if it's for certain things and not for certain things, one minute I hear that if the county, if Prince George's County is, you know, passing laws and it pertains to certain things, then we as a municipality should abide by what Prince George's County is doing. Similar to like what we voted on earlier, the amendment to the vehicles, the, the commercial vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, where it was quoted that PG County just changed their law, so we have to abide by PG County. So for this case, as far as the landlord is concerned, if PG County votes yes, are we, should this imply that we automatically have to vote yes as well because PG County said yes?
No, it does not. The city council has the right, again, the city council could be more stringent, um, and the city council has the right because they control, um, the entryways, uh, on the streets for curb cutting. So the city council can say no, um, but if they do so, the, the builder has the right to appeal the city council's decision, which is exactly what this builder is doing.
Okay. I just wanted clarity because I just, and I'll probably keep asking these type of questions because I want to be very clear that to me, oftentimes it comes off like we have to do this because that's what PG County is saying that they're doing and then oftentimes when it's certain things that we do not want, or we are not on the side of PG County, we're like, well, we don't have to do that because we're a municipality. So I just want some uniformity, um, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for?
Mr. President, may I chime in on, on what Councilwoman Gilliam just said? And just, just so everybody know, when you get a county permit, it says on that county permit, you must go to the municipality to get a permit. So they know that you have a permitting, permitting process in your, in your city and whatever that permitting process and if you don't, you know, and so the city does not have to give it because they do give us a right to, you know, they do require them to get a city permit as well as a, a, a county permit. So that's one reason why in this case, you know, they give us the authority to say, we're not going to give, issue a permit. And also we own the curb cut in this case, we own the street, so we don't have to open up a curb if we don't want to because it belongs to the city. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green, if there are no more questions. All right. Next up is Chief of Police report.
Evening, Council, Mayor, citizens that are watching. I'm Acting Captain Robinson with the Glen Arden Police Department and I'll be going over the chief's report. Uh, I believe everyone has a copy of the report. Uh, I'll just ask, answer any questions that you have at this time.
Are there any questions for, uh, Acting Captain Robinson? I know your name, but so often I was Captain Jackson, Captain Jackson.
Yeah, but it look, yeah, it look a little different.
All right, any questions? Uh, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, was there somebody you haven't broken into? Um, was it Rob or something?
It was, it was Rob.
It was Rob?
Yeah, they tried to steal some lottery tickets.
Oh, okay, okay. Was that during the daytime or?
It was, they'll, um, it was four individuals. Um, they were actually on a crime spree. Uh, the 7-Eleven was the third, uh, third crime that they attempted to do. Um, PG County was following them around from the second crime and when they went into the 7-Eleven, they decided to, uh, move in on them and they stopped them from, as they came out with the lottery tickets.
Oh, they, okay. All right. Um, all right, okay, I'm good.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right.
Acting Captain Robinson.
I do have, I do have one more.
I'm sorry.
Just one more before you sit down. Yeah, ain't getting away that easy, but no. But question, have they gotten, have they, uh, did you have any suspects that were doing the breaking and in, breaking and entering's up at, uh?
Woodmore?
Woodmore?
No, no.
No?
No, we don't have, we don't have any suspects. Um, City County is still investigating.
Okay.
And we have, um, one of our investigators, uh, tagging along, so any new information that, you know, they find out, they'll let him know and then I'll let you guys know.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, next is the, uh, City Treasurer report. Mr. Stewart?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the treasurer's report, um, I'm sure everyone get a chance to review, see what's going on, um, but I'm just gonna go over a few updates, um, just to bring you, um, in line with what's going on in the treasury. Currently, we are going through an audit. Um, the audit is supposed to be complete by the end of next month, which is when we'll be filing our, um, files to the legislative office. Um, due to the fact that we have used more than $750,000 in, due to the American Rescue Plan, um, we will be doing a single audit as well. Um, the engagement letter will be sent to me by the end of this week, uh, which we'll be, um, sending the auditors to start the, the, um, single audit along with our general audit. Um, they were saying it's best to have them together, um, and releasing them the same time. Uh, when it comes to the American Rescue Plan, I'll be providing you all with an update, um, giving you our spending and our, um, obligations through to December 31st, 2024. Um, through to November, looking at the financials, um, the city had a, uh, had revenues that exceed expenditures by 1,021,000. Um, another update I'd like to give you, and it's with regard to the real estate rebate program. Um, through to November, I, through to November, we have spent 44th, 444,500 on that program. Uh, approximately 889, um, individuals were given, um, rebates for, um, their contributions. Those amounts will also be a part of the 2024 audit, um, so you will see those numbers in that report. Um, the city, um, cash, um, okay, so the city is, um, set to pay any expenses, has sufficient funds to pay any expenses through to the end of, um, the year. Um, in the investment account, we have 8,030,000 and in our current account, we have 2,389,000. Uh, so we're well underway to complete in the year, successful. Any questions you have? Um, I'm open. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Going twice.
Uh, yeah.
Councilman Harry?
Um, I just want to make, I just want to ask a question. Are we on target with our revenue for this year?
Yes, we are. Um, in, uh, this month, we actually received, um, over $600,000 for taxes, so we are right there, right, um, on point. The only other areas I have a little concern in are, um, like the goal room and some of the revenues as it relate to the, um, the, with regard to code enforcement. And please remember that these are some new revenue streams that we are tapping into and it is going fine, but, um, we just have to see how this year run. Now, the, the biggest question I would like to ask though is while doing the budget amendment that we'll be doing, should I revisit these, um, revenue streams to make sure that we are giving out a, a more accurate, um, budget?
I think if you're gonna do it, you should.
A comprehensive outlook of the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, they're not gonna take you past February.
I'll try, that too, but as far as I can go, I will bring that information in.
Yeah, because I was gonna ask you about the interest income?
Yes.
You got a budget of 378,000 dollars and we only collected so far 175,000 in, um, according to November on the summary. We have a budget of 378,000 dollars. We've collected here the actual 175,000 and we're looking at, looking at the last statement you provided, we're collecting about $30,000 a month.
Um, so right now, right through to, yeah, it's like 35, 37,000 dollars a month. We have 201,000 dollars as of November. Um, the December reports came in, I'll be sending those to you as well, um, when doing the December's report. But where the revenue is concerned for interest income, we are on target. We are.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Now we're moving on to our citizens' comments portion of the agenda. Uh, for anyone that's in house, you can raise your hand, you can come to the podium, uh, state your name, uh, and you have five minutes to speak on anything you want to speak on for all online. I see there's already one, uh, virtual hand, just please raise your virtual hand and then we will call on you then. So with that, um, the citizens' comments portion is open. Are there any, all right, yeah, so I don't know, oh, name change. Uh, so I'll go to Mr. Cross and then Mr. Powell, go to you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council, um, staff. Just have a couple of, um, questions. Uh, see that the mayor, um, in accordance to the charter, has to report to the citizens just like the city manager and the other, um, heads of departments, was professionally recognized and to provide their reports, so we would like to see them, I would like to see the city manager, the mayor's report, um, from her mouth and we've got a couple of questions for you, Madam Mayor. Um, could you please address the situation? Um, Councilwoman Fareed expressed about the mayor's not providing names for the Board of Elections and the echoed the Council Curtis and to rush it. As Councilman Harron stated earlier, um, everyone is running for a council seat, so this surely is a, a consideration too, right? So Mayor, could you, uh, please address this and also explain the comptroller's new approach to, uh, direct tax filing for the tax year? And I saw something, uh, about torchbearer program. What is that? And also the last thing, I just had a quick question on a, a case number M516300, Office of Attorney General and Glen Arden Housing Authority. What was the outcome of that? Can you guys hear me? Is that what's up?
Yeah, I was trying to interrupt you, uh, because we couldn't hear a thing you said.
Okay, you hear now?
Uh, we can hear now, still a little bit low, Mr. Grab. If you can turn them up a little bit, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, I'll start from the beginning just to make sure. The mayor, in accordance to the charter, has to report to the citizens. Other department heads have been professionally recognized to provide their reports. I would like to hear the city, the mayor's report brief at the beginning of the meeting and give the mayor the courtesy to move on from her report as if, just like you gave the other department heads their time at the podium to do their reports. And I had a couple of questions for the mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, could you please address the situation, um, Councilwoman Fareed expressed about the mayor not providing names for the Board of Elections and echoing of the Councilman Curtis, the need to rush it as Councilman Harron has stated, all of the, uh, council people are running for council seats. And Mayor, could you just please, uh, address this for me? Uh, also, I had a quick question on, uh, explaining the comptroller's new approach to direct tax filing for this tax year and the torchbearer program that you talked about, can you explain what that is? So Paul can be on the on page here, what we're talking about torchbearer. And on case number four, M4, M5, sorry, case number M516300, Office of Attorney General and Glen Arden Housing Authorities, what was the outcome and any updates? Thank you. That was all addressed to the mayor.
Oh, okay. I, I, Mr. Stewart, um, but go ahead, Mayor Cross. All right, so those are your questions?
Yes, those are all my questions.
Okay, just so long as you know that you're surrendering your time to the response. All right.
Copy.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the question on the mayor's report and I do appreciate the, the realization that, uh, per charter, their mayor does have to give a report to the citizens whether anyone on the council desires to hear. Uh, the mayor itself has, um, you know, the Board of Elections, uh, was submitted for budgeting, uh, May, uh, forgive me, may I go to just make sure I get the right numbers here? Uh, it was submitted for budgeting during the FY25 budget year by former city manager Beverly Habada. Uh, as we submitted that budget, uh, all of the funds that were needed for the board's expenses was zeroed out, so they were not afforded in the amended budget which was passed for FY25. Uh, that was April the 14th of 2024. Uh, as we submitted that budget, that's one of the reasons why you, you can't pay them. There was no money in the budget allocated for, uh, the expenses for the Board of Elections and as a result, also I do note that while there was a charter review board that subsequently changed the chapter in the charter which addressed, uh, when the mayor is to have this particular, uh, project done, uh, in section 701, uh, by the charter that was in place at the time of even this past budget. Uh, the charter, it stated that we had to have those names and on or by the first Monday in February. So the time expenditure is not yet up. Uh, while the council has now passed this charter, uh, amendments to change the charter, the problem is, um, it's after the date, so there's no retroaction that I could do to give any names, uh, in accordance to what you'll now see before the first Monday on the year prior and that would have been FY23 when we should have been looking at FY24 and we were also, uh, denied funding for the board. Um, so to your question of the election, yes, there are members that are provided. Ms. Lolita Green, I've talked to her during the Thanksgiving program and many others, uh, about joining, so I'm happy to see that there are people who did stand up. This board- This board will receive some good representation, and the council will be getting their representation relative to the charter as it was, not as what was changed. And unfortunately, retroactively, being able to provide names is not something that we are able to do without a time machine. The completion, if you will, of question number two relative to the comptroller. Now, the comptroller elected me, supported with me coming on to her team as a community representative for two years under the Local Government Advisory Council. With that, in serving this two-year term, we have been able to move in such a way to get the IRS to support direct filing across the state of Maryland. And this tax season, many of us, when we first started filing taxes, unfortunately, we paid more out in forms and filing these taxes than we received back. Now, with the direct tax filing, those that are within the consumer base, no, those without extra holdings or investments, will be able to file online and get their tax done really in an expeditious manner without having to go to, say, an H and R blog or some other filing systems where they pay more out in filing for those different forms, which can be a hundred dollars apiece, and they get more of their money back. So this is a good thing. Again, not quite there for our military, but there's also in coming towards this particular tax year, there's going to be filings to support our seniors. So this is a really good move, and this is as of January the seventh. So for your next question relative to case number MS sixteen three zero zero with the Office of the Attorney General. I was contacted by a member of the Glen Arden Housing Authority relative to wanting to launch a class action lawsuit relative to the Glen Arden management piece of the Housing Authority and relative to if the city could do anything to ensure that maintenance and different types of clarifications needed inside of residential houses in Glen Arden Housing Authority could be enforced by the city. So I ended up having to write a letter to the Attorney General's team to advise them that the mayor and this particular body, the council, we do not have that type of oversight authority, particularly because Glen Arden falls under the housing and urban development, if you will, for those types of managerial issues. And they also have their own essential charter, governance documents, which helps them. We did take action to reach out to Congressman Glenn Ivy's office as well on behalf of the resident and also tried to come to some resolve and conclusions with the Board of Commissioner and the chairman, if you will, or the president, director, forgive me, of the Glen Arden Housing Authority. Relative to this particular report, what's happened is there's been a need for some updates and maintenance within the particular homes, and they haven't been taken in an appropriate amount of time. And so this has just been an attempt to try and help get products and change actions and any updates. And particularly in the case of this particular report, there was some hazardous to the people inhabitants that needed to be updated. And I'm happy to report that through various communication channels, we've been able to get that moving through the Glen Arden Housing Authority Director and team and has met a level of support, if you will, from the residential support team. So this is not necessarily a lost cause. And then your last question, forgive me, on the torchbearer program. So we were able to receive a torchbearers, which is a part of the fellowship certification process for administrators, mayors, and officials in across the state of Maryland. And so this is part of the University of Maryland Academy of Excellence. And so I was able to receive this torchbearer award within the year of having been certified as a member of the Academy of Excellence. So this is something that, I mean, think is a notable thing in the municipal league. And so thank you so much for your questions. And thank you again for the feedback regarding the mayor report and in the transparency of the charter.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes, thank you, Council President. In terms of the clarity and transparency of the charter, section seven oh one, Board of Elections, says, "There shall be a Board of Elections consisting of ten members who shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council on or before the first Monday in February of the year immediately preceding a regular city election." Therefore, according to our charter, this election board members were supposed to be appointed in February of 2024, not February of 2025. Furthermore, the mayor may fulfill, may fill a vacancy on the board caused by the departure of a member by resignation or otherwise, and such person's term shall begin upon his or her appointment and continue until the last day preceding the first Monday in February of the year preceding a regular city election. As some of you may be aware, the board, the members of the Board of Elections that were appointed for this last election we had have resigned. So there have been vacancies in the Board of Elections for the entire time that we have been in this term. Notwithstanding the provisions of subsection A, which states that those appointments are supposed to be made in the year preceding, not the same year as the election, if there exists any vacancies on the Board of Elections within six months of a regular election or at any point prior to a special election, the city council shall appoint as many citizens as are required to ensure a complement of ten members. So again, the city council stepped in to fulfill their obligations under the charter because the requirements of the mayor under the charter were not fulfilled.
Mr. Powell.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Powell, and I live in Ward One, and I have a question for Mayor Cross. Madam Mayor, no, certain cities in the county provide after-school and recreation programs for their kids ages seventeen and under. For example, Highsville is taking their kids on a field trip this Monday, next Monday. Like I was saying, Highsville taking their kids on a field trip next Monday, and they're having like an after-school program for kids ages K through five. One of the few cities in the county that don't have these kind of programs is Glen Arden. Can you tell us why, can you tell us why the city don't have these kind of programs?
Is that your only question?
Yeah.
Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, for that. And I will say that the city council has not supported funding these types of programs. And in fact, the mayor has created the Creative Youth Arts Summit and Conference, which is in its third iteration, sir. It's happened every first Saturday in February since I have been the mayor, and it has exposed our youth to alternative career choices and even had youth being hired on the spot as we work with Employee Prince Georges. In addition to that, under the mayor's own particular actions, because it was not supported and funded in mayoral special events, which you know has been cut by the city council, just lack of evidence of reason why, but was able to take the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club down to the African American Heritage Museum and ensure that over fifty was able to be exposed to the heritage and the richness of that museum down in Washington, D.C. And even further than that, we've even moved in such a way, sir, to ensure that our youth were able to go through some types of tech and recreational exposure, as we've made clear since I've been elected, that mental health and wellness is a key component of this particular mayoral's priorities. And so we've had many youth who have received additional counseling and support and family services. Outside of having even a paycheck to do it, we even reached out to the county for that support. So there has been programming that this mayor has done absent of having a budget and special events. Now, this council tends to state that special events budget of the administration is something that the mayor can use, but as we know, I can't come into anyone's personal house and use their budget. It has to be a budget line under the executive branch, which I will tell you, citizens, is zeroed out. And that Board of Elections is zeroed out. There was no money to support paying anyone from FY twenty-four to twenty-five, and it's still no money. So while you may have a legislation that you change to make the charter meet your needs, Councilwoman Fareed, that was not the charter.
Point of order, Mayor Cross. So we want to reserve this time to actually answering citizens' questions and not going back and forth. So, Mr. Powell, was your question answered?
Yes. Notice that District Heights has less people than Glen Arden population-wise, and they have these kinds of programs, you know, taking those kids and recreation programs and taking kids and senior citizens on trips. I was wondering why the Glen Arden doesn't have these kind of programs.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
He asked another question.
No, he did not ask another question.
Well, we had the Evergrande Travelers. We've gone on eight trips already, so I'm not quite sure where this information is coming from.
Mayor Cross, thank you. Just a point of clarity. The volunteers for the, what did you say? The election board, they're volunteers, correct? They do not get paid. Am I correct on that? So there was no need to fund in 2024 an election board for volunteer services. The point of a budget for the election board is to actually pay for the election. So in 2022, 2023, and 2024, there would be no funds. But that does not mean that it can't be a board of volunteers who say that they will help out in a year of the election, which is 2025. And so that is why that was not funded, because there's no, the volunteers do not get paid. They don't get paid a stipend on a monthly basis while they're waiting. They get paid when, a stipend when they actually do the election, if I'm not mistaken. So it's not that we have volunteers on retainer. That would not be a good use of funds just to pay volunteers just to not do anything because it's not an election year, but they could be a part of the board. And we have been in discussions to establish the Board of Elections so that we can at least give them some type of training, they can, you know, properly plan, but we just haven't had a Board of Elections because the prior board resigned after the last election. So with that, I will also point out that there was ample opportunity for funds to be in the budget for different things, but the mayor declined to house funds in the administrative budget, which is fine. But, you know, that was the decision that she made. So with that, are there any other citizen comments? Sir, do you have any comments?
Mr. Stewart, where is the funds located to cover the election? I never thought, knowing it to be put in the executive budget.
Thanks for that question. The budget for the election board is actually in the general operations account, and it's fifty thousand dollars for 2025.
Thank you. So the election board is funded for 2025.
Yes, it is.
At fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Council President. If I might add, I want there to be clarity on the citizens' part that the election board is not just intended for that every four-year election. At any point in a term, something, a council member could resign, anything could happen, and there would be a need for a special election. That is why the terms of the Board of Election members are for four years. They're not for six months or whatever the period is from when their term begins until the election. It doesn't end there. We need people in place to be prepared to administer an election at any point. And so this is very important. We urge you as citizens, you know, if you want to get involved, this is a great opportunity for you to volunteer and get involved and ensure that we have, you know, fair and transparent elections. And that's really a difficult task, so I'm thankful for these people who have experience on the election board. But pulling together an election in a short period of time is not a small task that needs to be done in terms of reviewing candidates and making sure they're qualified to run for office and then making sure that they're, they are campaigning in accordance with regulations and then making sure that there's different ways for people to vote, different modes of voting. All of that is a lot of work that needs to be done in trying to bring people in less than six months before that is supposed to occur and expect them to do it correctly is really not a reasonable ask.
Councilman Harron.
And let me just say, in my 20 years on this council, the election board, the election budget has never, ever, ever been in an executive budget. It is never put in executive, is not put in the councils, is not put in administration. It's always gone to general because you always want to leave, you never want to have that appearance of impropriety. So I'm not sure why it was stuck in there when it was and we had, and we should have taken it out. I'm not sure why somebody would think that, you know, you're running for office and you have complete control over the election budget is beyond me, but it's never been in there. And like I said, we've always funded our elections, so I'm not sure where the information is coming from.
Thank you, Councilman Harron. Council McGeeall.
Thank you, Councilman, Council President. Just for a point of clarity, just to make sure, the fifty thousand dollars that's put aside for the election board, I believe I heard, does that take into consideration if there's a runoff or whatever at any chance?
Mr. Stewart? Yes, that does include. Actually, you won't have an issue because everybody's at large.
Yeah, everyone's at, Council McGeeall, everyone's at large, so I think the runoff was only for the mayor's position. So with that, we will not run into an issue with the runoff.
Okay. The last thing I also wanted to mention, and it's been stated already, but just to be clear on this, that the election committees, AKA board, they are volunteers. However, after the election, or I should say, the day of election, they do turn in their documentation, like of all the work and time that they did work, and they, I believe, get a stipend. But before that, like February of 2024, March twenty-four, June, July, August, September, all the way up until now, we were, they do not get paid. So the notion of they're not having a budget is irrelevant because they are not to get paid until the election is over. Wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions online? There are none in house? He didn't, he said no. All right, with that, the time is 10:45. This This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. He said no.